Now streaming live on YouTube on my screen.
There you go.
Mine as well.
Okay, so we have both in Audra, correct?
Yep.
Cable channel. Okay, great. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Camden Select Board Meeting of April 21st, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with our agenda. The first item is any comments on non-agenda items. And Janice, Audra, I don't think we've received any non-agenda item comments. Is that correct? All right, good. Then we will go on to item two, which would be Select Board Reports. And Mark, would you like to start?
I'll start. Today, I just want to talk about, I just had a conversation with Janet McMahon, who's this teacher at watershed who's been working on, and her students have been working on the Global Covenant of Mayors work for the town. And there have been some emails going back and forth that they were trying to figure out how to proceed with everything that's going on. One of the questions they had is, this was the year that the, the, the school was looking to do, their whole term was going to be working on this, and they're going to do so it was a one-year effort. And she's thinking that it may be better as a two-year effort. But a couple of the things that they're looking for from us are, one, are we would adopt the same targets that the state has recommended as other towns have done. And I don't know that everybody's seen that. So that's gone out through some energy, energy, energy committee emails. So I'll, I'll pull that out and send it to the rest of the people on the, on the board, and also to Jeremy and Audra. Just so everybody can look at that, because that's something we should discuss at some point. And then also, Audra, they were looking for vehicle registration information. And Carrie had gotten back to them a few weeks ago saying that he could help. But she hasn't heard anything since. And she knows that everyone is, you know, dealing with circumstances that are just unusual and difficult. They're, they're just looking for some answers on when they can expect, or if they should get it this term.
I would, I would say, based on especially the conversation we're going to have tonight, it's pretty likely that everybody is going to be so slammed that there's just no way.
Okay, I told her that that might be the case. So that's why she was recommending her soon, this is going to become a two-year project for them. But we still, in the meantime, we should still bring up the, I'll make sure I pass the state targets to everyone so we can look at those. Is that something that the Select Board members can do? While everyone else is working so hard. And that, that's it. I just want to make sure that in the midst of everything we're doing, that we don't, you know, lose the long view about all of the things that we're looking, looking to accomplish. That's it for me, Bob.
Thank you, Mark. Allison, how about you?
Uh, yes. Speaking of climate change and the environment, since our last Select Board meeting, we had a couple of storms and the flooding was very noticeable. It really highlighted some of the issues with stormwater management and just the magnitude and quantity of the water that this relatively small and steep watershed has to deal with. Not only did we have flooding, pretty significant flooding around the lake. If anybody saw the Bog Bridge boat launch, it was almost completely submerged. And then we also had quite a bit of flooding in the downtown area, the Smiling Cow, that lower level of it had quite a bit of water around it. I don't know if I can share my screen real quick here, but it's and then we also had quite a bit of flooding. I'm hearing myself back. Hold on, I'm going to cancel that because sorry, I'll have to test that another time. But it was, you know, standing with Dave Bolstridge, who is our dam control agent, and having, listening to, to the process that he goes through to try and decide, okay, we can't have flooding in the downtown, so we need to be careful about the amount of water that's let out of the lake. But then, if you don't close, if you, if you don't open up the East and West Dam, a, a good amount during these major events, you're also looking at flooding many camps on Norton Pond and McGonagook Lake, both in Camden and in Lincolnville. And so just that, like, sometimes there's just no winning, and that was the case this time. There wasn't significant damage, but you could see all over the place McGonagook River overflowing its boundaries. And then down at the public landing, we saw a combination of a, of a predicted high tide combined with moderate storm surge. So that, that was scheduled to happen around like 12:30, 1 o'clock in the morning. And so I went down there, it was also snowing and it was the most I have personally seen on the public landing side. The Harbor Master Shack was totally, you know, water was totally flowing underneath it. The boardwalks were lifting up. Crush Stone was being pulled underneath, the creaking. Then a day later, we ended up losing one of the ramps. Trash cans knocked over. I was like wrestling with trash cans, pulling them back up. And then on the Harbor Park side, there was, the, the benches were very submerged. So that could have even been worse because the wind had died down a bit before we hit peak high tide. So it's just, I mean, it's everything that's been predicted in every single watershed, first watershed school report, and then Penobscot Bay Resiliency assessment. So there's something about actually going down there and seeing it and seeing just the, the power of the floats getting pushed around and all these sort of unexpected things that happen. So I would encourage anybody to sort of keep an eye out for that. One or the, and if you don't, I'll just take pictures and tell you later. But the only other thing is tomorrow, thanks to Vicky Duderah, she, one of the things we normally do during Earth Day is we have our roadside cleanups and the Conservation Commission used to have all kinds of things and we're all kind of ground to a halt on our, our normal Earth Day activities. So Vicky had the great idea of doing a Zoom call tomorrow. That's at 1 o'clock. There's room for 100 people. And I'm going to help her moderate it. And it's basically going to be an opportunity to discuss things we, you know, questions, concerns, environmental issues for our local area. So for like Camden and Rockport residents, if you want to participate in that, it'll also be recorded. So you could watch it later if that's something you want to do. But emailing Vicky is the way to get on that list. Or you can email me as well, and I'll send it along to Vicky. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Allison. Taylor?
I'll, I'll play the broken record again, as I had the last couple of weeks, just reminding everybody about the importance of continuing to follow Maine and federal CDC guidelines about social distancing. I know everyone is really getting exhausted by everything, but I think this week finally we started to see the curve flatten in Maine especially, which is exciting, but also I just sort of reiterate what I think the, the state is saying in that this is not a time for people to get lax about the social distancing. And I really like the analogy this can put out there that if you're prescribed antibiotics, you don't start taking the antibiotics after day three, just because you start feeling better, that's when things get way worse. So, you know, I think everyone's doing a great job. As exhausting as this is, continuing the social distancing and altering our, our very way of life as we know it. But I think it's important that we continue to follow CDC guidelines and as we see light at the end of the tunnel and all come out of this successful together. So I'll, I'll leave it there.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Jenna?
I don't have a lot to add. I just, I want to echo Taylor in that I do know that there's been a little bit of, of concern about people relaxing with social distancing. And I know it's exhausting. I had a personal event over the weekend that really made me feel like I needed to get out and be with people. And it's just, when we're seeing the curve start to flatten, we can be very optimistic that those statistics are in fact reflective of what's going on. I know that there's a lag in testing and we all, we all know, acknowledge all of these things, but let's keep up the good work, Maine. And that's all I got for you now.
Thank you, Jenna. Audra, do you want to add anything? No, she's saying. Just a small one on my part. We are moving ahead with, with the, the energy audit of the town. In fact, I believe Sarah called David St. Larrick can correct me, but we have a industrial grade audit, all-day audit on Thursday, the 29th, I believe. And I know it is, it's Thursday, the 29th. And hopefully that will be included in the library also. So that's our, that's our performance contracting with, with Siemens. With that, I will move on.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday. Thank you. 29th and 30th, right? Yeah. The approval of the Board of Ministers next, does anybody have any comments or a motion to approve the Board of Ministers from April 7, 2020?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Select Board Minutes for April 7, 2020. I found no, nothing that brought my attention to it.
Can I meet you there?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All's in favor, Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob is aye, five ayes, no nays. On to item four, which will be, yes.
May I interrupt you for one moment? I just got a message and I know we are all aware of that. Yeah, as I interrupt you, that people are not able to access the public packet still. I know that we, we've made that clear, but just so that everyone knows, I don't know that people are able to follow along at home.
Um, so if people'd like to access the pub, public packet, we were able to put it on in a different location. So if they go click on the link on the calendar to this meeting. So if you go, scroll down to the calendar and go to 421, there's a link to the meeting packet that they can click on and download the public packet.
That's on the front page of the website, right?
The person wrote to me probably just heard that, but I will send them a message if not.
Great, yeah. And, and we appreciate everybody's patience with this. We're having technical issues with the, with the website that didn't allow us to put it in the normal place. So apologies and things.
Appreciation for the efforts that are being made. So.
Yeah, there was a I'm sorry?
I said, I've just, I've heard nothing but appreciation for the efforts that are being made and people trying to help us out with this curve, learning curve. So for what it's worth.
Sure, sure.
For having technical issues with the website that didn't allow us to put
Yeah.
I don't know. That transmission was broken up on my end. But yeah, that was a problem. You know it is. And I think it's like, I believe it's on, isn't it?
Somebody watching? Yeah.
I think it was.
No.
I don't know. I'm not sure. Moving on to our next, I mean, agenda, which be, which would be actually discussion and approval of the FY 91 audit. Hello, Karen.
Hello.
Good to see you guys again.
Good to see you.
Good. I just thought I'd lead into, I'm sure everybody has read the hundred and something pages of the audit report. And I swear to God, every CPA I know gets a lot better sleep when it's over 100 pages. But, well, job well done, by the way. And I just want to say from just a surface overview, yeah, I gotta say this financial, which is obviously ending June 30, 2019, the la, our last fiscal year, we're through fiscal 20 already, is, is really an outstanding, as I read it, a very outstanding financial performance on the town of Camden. Not the least of which is, just in general terms, I look at, you know, where the revenues are year in and year out, the town's about 10% higher on revenues. Pretty flat on the expenses side, which leads toward the cash side, which leads toward the good news that we have, you know, a good, great cash position. And equally importantly, we have, and now thanks to Joey's correcting me on the number I had wrong before, it was, I think we were $4.7 million in, in the unrestricted fund balance as of June 30th, 2019. There are, our friends can corroborate, but there are no material findings reported in, in the report. It's, 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 it's glowing. Do you want to make any comments, Karen or Jody or anybody to that, to what I just said?
So your financial position keeps increasing. The one thing that we would like to address are possibly those negative fund balances that you have in the, in your special revenues. That was from last, from last year.
Right.
If we can.
We, we've cleaned up and worked a lot with Jody to clean up as much as we can. I think that there's a couple of other ones that could probably be easily done with some research. Unfortunately, whether or not a town meeting seven or eight years ago created and birthed some of these funds, there's some challenges out there. We just need some more time with Jody, but I can tell you, a lot of that stuff's been addressed in the past three years for sure. So.
Yeah, I was, I was going to comment, that's, a lot of this stuff's been cleaned up. I know it hasn't been easy.
Yeah.
It's just that oftentimes the, the Ts aren't crossed and the Is aren't dotted and not intentionally. It's in, it's an error of not commission, but omission.
And a lot of it's research, you know, and going back into old town meetings. And, and that, that really has been some struggles for the, I'd say the final few. And there's only like really three, you know, I think that are, that are going to involve some more research. So for sure. So.
And I am aware of that. I had some of the comments that Jody clarified for me in terms of some treatments of our overall financial picture in terms of our, not just government funds, but business activities. And I know it's being worked on for this current fiscal year. So we don't need to go into that. It's not going to change anything for this FY 19 report. Jody, did you want to add anything to what we've said?
Um, no, I think my, you know, my discussion with you about the, about the audit was, I mean, it speaks for itself really. We do have a lot of work to do on the deficit fund balances. There will be some that are going to be presented to the board to quote unquote, clean up things from prior years.
Yeah.
And I'm looking forward to working with Karen again this year. Hopefully she feels the same way.
I do, I do.
Thank you.
All that said, does anybody on the Select Board have any questions of our illustrious guests? Or Jody? You're illustrious too, but.
I'll just ask really quickly. What I'm seeing is that, you know, there, there are obviously some things that need to be cleaned up. But overall, we're in a very healthy position. Everything's under control. There are no real large issues we have to look at for, you know, having been on the board the longest, that things are, you know, and in plain speak as you can do, we're in pretty good shape. Is that correct?
You're in pretty good shape. That's correct.
Great.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Allison?
At what point do we find ourselves in too good of shape to be reasonable in terms of the unassigned fund balance? But at, at what point does that start to be frowned on when we're?
Yeah, Allison, was that, is the question before pandemic or after pandemic?
Well.
I think, I think.
Does the pandemic allow us to, you know, should that just need a little bit more of a chin than normal policy?
So here's my thoughts, Allison. I've probably talked to 25 communities in the past 10 days. And I guarantee you, they would all wish that they were in the same financial condition as Camden, you know, has, has progressed to for sure. So, and, 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 and I think there's going to be a lot of uncertainty that's going to happen even after the close of your fiscal year that the state of Maine and all the, the, the local governments won't know about until after your fiscal year. So I think you're put in a good position for sure to, to, to weather this madness. But I think at some point in time, and it's probably really like right now, you know, Allison, you know, I understand that you've got some fund balance policies there, but it might be time to look at that. You know, because you're at about 90 days, you know, of your fund balance, but we, we, of your budget, which is where we'd like you to be, and it's the best you've ever been. Now's the time to start looking at funding and taking cares, maybe some deferred maintenance, capital improvements and just things like that. But I would definitely wait till probably after this madness, you know, and I think that that's probably going to be a 2022, you know, addressing, you know, would be my advice to Camden and all the advice that I've given out to the municipalities in the past three weeks. So.
Any other questions? Taylor? Allison, you have something? Alice, yeah, sure. Go ahead. You're breaking up, Allison, a little bit.
Oh. I don't know what to say.
You're breaking up a little bit.
Breaking up for everyone?
Yeah, I think your connection is slow, Allison.
Okay, I'm going to reconnect on a different computer because I'm
All right. Okay, it's just a little bit. It's not that bad.
Skip me, go to the questions and.
Okay, Taylor, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so kind of, I guess a follow-up to Allison's question, and I realize this really, this bleeds into much more of a policy discussion. So I don't mean to, to, to lead you down that road, guys, but I, I think it's important to, I, I'm glad Allison brought it up. The balancing the, the line between having a really comfortable, what's called a rainy day fund or an emergency fund, enough cash on hand so that we can weather the storm, as you put it, could obviously is not, couldn't be more important than, than right now. You know, I think that, that there's also quite a few taxpayers that also would, would be encouraged by seeing the tax rolls receive less of a burden this budget cycle. So I suspect it's something that we'll be looking at from a policy standpoint, certainly a budget standpoint in the next couple of weeks probably is, do we take from that undesignedated fund balance X amount of dollars to pay down items in the budget that would take away from what would normally be in the tax rolls? But if we do that, you know, I don't mean to put you on the spot in terms of what a number might be, but I think just in terms of the the action of doing that, do you think that it would be unwise for us to tap into any amount of money in the undesignedated fund balance now to try to bring the tax rolls down?
You, you're asking us? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I think that now would be the worst time to do that, would be my outside professional opinion.
Okay. Well, that's helpful.
I, I think if you establish a baseline, though, you know, what you can do, you know, is at least understand what that number is. And if there's tax relief to be given, you know, certainly, you know, remember, this number is based on a year ago. You know, and, 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 and what I would say is, if you're going to do anything, let us work with Jody, you know, but I would not go below 60%, 60%, 60 days of your operating budget, which is about 16%. And I'll put a number on that for Camden, about 3.6, 3.7 million dollars, you know, for you is what I would not go below, you know, if I was in all your guys' shoes, for sure.
Okay. All right. No, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, you back?
Oh, you unmuted me. Yeah, no, Taylor really followed up quite perfectly on the question. So I, I'm not sure that I agree with the auditor, but
I'm not sure either. Yeah, I, I, good, good, good questions, though. Let's see. Jenna, did you have any questions?
I am all set.
Okay, good.
Would you guys want us to work with Jody on giving you and trying to firm up what that number is for June 30, 2020?
I, yes. I mean, to be honest with you, it's something that I could plan on bringing up in future budget discussions in the next two weeks.
Jody, I think you have that number, don't you?
Are we talking on the 16.7%? There's always been a question about 16.7% of what? Is it, is it just the town budget? Is it the town? County? Is it the town and the school?
Yeah.
There's never been a clear answer on that.
Yeah, the standard saying would be town, the school, and to, and to put it into Camden terms, Jody, it'd be about $21.5 million based on this last budget, you know, that we worked with in 2019.
Yeah, and, and historically, it's, it's only included and just the municipal budget. So.
Well, we've changed, we've talked about that. That's Jody, yeah, that she summed it up perfectly, that we, sometimes it gets said that, oh, no, it's just the town, and sometimes it's the school, but that do I, did I understand correctly, Ron, that it's, that you're saying the standard is?
Town, town and school, you're statutorily responsible, whatever your state percentage works out by statute, you're responsible by the 20th of the month, you know, to certainly write that check out to the school district. So we always say that, you know, and, and that's what the standards would say too. Your municipal budget, county budget and school budget would be mathed into, you know, those numbers.
Right. Good question.
So then maybe we're not even at the, at the standard, 16.7% of everything.
Yeah. And, and what we're saying is you're definitely at that standard right now to the tune of another probably $700,000. But this was back on June 30, 19. And if you want to, want us to work with Judy, I'd come up with Judy, Jody, sorry. I've been talking to Judy all day. If you want us to work with Jody, we can come up with that math and look into the crystal ball over the next two and a half months, you know, and see, give you guys an idea of where we expect you to land in two and a half months come June 30, 2020. And I think that that would be valuable as you move ahead with your budget. So.
Definitely. Thank you. That's helpful.
All right. Thank you. Any, done any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the audit report as drafted?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the, the for your 19 audit report as presented.
Second. Any additional discussion? If not, I'll ask for all those in favor, Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Bob, aye, five ayes. Thank you so much, Karen and company. We really appreciate your work and help.
Audra, can you invite us to the next selectmen's meeting? Because Karen's cooking me dinner right now. And I'd love to come to another meeting anytime, real soon, folks, real soon.
With that last name, I hope it's Italian.
It is, yeah.
That's pretty generous of her. I'll be right over. You make her, you make her work after hours and she's cooking you dinner.
Yeah, I'm about to get spoiled. Let's do this again soon. Jody, we'll reach out to you soon.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your support. Thank you. On, onward to the next agenda, item number five, which is the discussion and the recommendations of the, the inland mooring group. I know we have Paul Leaper here. And Taylor, why don't you orchestrate how you'd like to lead into this?
Yeah, sure. So I've been liaison for this working group. I know Paul probably has a very detailed presentation because he always is very detailed. So I won't talk too much, but just to kind of give a little background to refresh everybody's memory. About a year and a half ago, the Select Board had the concept, and ultimately a vote brought up to a special town meeting to put a moratorium on new moorings in Lake McGonagook. And that, that came up for a couple of different reasons, but I, I think the concern initially was that there were several unregulated moorings being placed on the lake. And we didn't have a handle on that. So that is sort of the impetus on where the working group came from, where it was created. Primarily focused on Lake McGonagook and Barrett's Cove, where there are about a dozen moorings that aren't, aren't necessarily tied to shorefront property, but are just kind of there in the area of the, the boat landing. So the group of six people with Paul as the chair has been meeting for about the last year or so. We've had a dozen or so meetings, I would think. And came up with some recommendations, not unanimous recommendations from the whole group. There were, there were certainly some dissenting opinions. And I know Paul will get into that. And after he finishes the presentation, I'll kind of sort of explain where I think where my head is at on the issue. But I want to thank the whole working group for really working very hard. Many meetings over the last year, a lot of research. We spent time with Bill Kelly looking at the legal aspects of regulating the moorings in the lake. So really very diligent. And Paul has done such a great job leading this group and being a very highly organized chair. So I especially want to thank you, Paul, for all the work you put in and for being here tonight.
But, I was just going to say, don't forget to get into this, don't forget to read the letter we received today into the record.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll do it right after Paul's presentation. So, yeah, with that, I guess we'll just, Paul, if you want to take it away.
Good evening, folks. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Very good. I'm going to try to do a share screen here. So my experience, I don't see any of you, but you can see what I'm doing here. So it's going to be, oh, seven or eight minutes here. If that works for the board, I see a nod, so that works. Yes, thank you, Paul. Yep. There we go. Okay, inland working group report to you folks. Just give you a little overview here of, this is roughly the McGonacook Lake that's in the town of Camden. And hopefully you guys can see my arrow here. This is a Bog Bridge Boat Ramp area right here. This is Barrett's Cove Swim Beach over here, the Route fifty-two Boat Ramp right there, and these are the Route fifty-two ledges right here. So as Taylor said, we had six people on the, on the group with two owners of moorings off the Route fifty-two Boat Ramp, representative of McGonacook Rowing, and two shorefront frontage owners there, as well as myself as the director of the McGonacook Watershed Association. Okay. See if I can do this. Well, doesn't want to go back. So basically, our job was to look at what the situation was out there on the water, try to determine what any, if there are any present problems that we had, and look at potential future problems, and then give recommendations to the board. The situation in two thousand nineteen, we have shorefront owners who typically have moorings for boats and or swim floats. We didn't bother to try to count those. We had at least five more unregulated moorings in the Bog Bridge Boat Ramp area. Some would be in for a couple of weeks, then come out again, that sort of thing. Over by fifty-two, we had twelve, and off the ledges, we had one. That one actually dragged its moor in from the Route fifty-two Boat Ramp area. Identified problems was getting to and from the Route fifty-two Boat Ramp on the water side. The rowers expressed that they had issues getting to and from their dock, which is southeast of the Route fifty-two Boat Ramp. And we had moored boats drifting around at both Bog Bridge and Barrett's Cove. Some of the group also felt there was potential safety issues about having moorings at Barrett's Cove and distant swimmers that use that area. Overcrowding was a potential future problem. Obviously, there's not a whole lot of unregulated moorings out there, but obviously, if the word gets out, we may have had more user conflicts between riparian owners and non-riparians, that's shorefront owners and non-shorefront moorings. Obviously, if someone wakes up and someone's got their, someone else's boat is in front of their camp, they might get a little upset. And one big issue, at least for us in the group, was the potential for houseboats and overnight use. Some of the lakes in Maine now have sort of an Airbnb kind of thing with houseboats, where people can rent them by the week, that sort of thing. So recommendations, I'll try to get through these relatively quickly. We think that the town should formalize an inland harbor master and move forward with that. He can help with any problems, sort of boots in the boat, if you will. And the majority of the group felt that standalone ordinance or regulations were needed to solve the issues or potential issues in the future. One member was on record during our meetings, felt that having an inland harbor master that was appointed by the town was enough to deal with the problems. And as we said, the water body, really, we dealt with just McGonacook Lake. If there are any problems at other place, other water bodies later on, that could be addressed at that time. So we came up with an idea of having a designated mooring area, essentially a little mini harbor on McGonacook Lake, designate an area or areas where people could place their moorings. We looked at Bog Bridge, Barrett's Cove, the ledges, as well as other areas. One key part of this is we felt that the, that area needed access from town-owned land and not be located in front of private shorefront, either developed or undeveloped. So at Bog Bridge, we looked at that. The group was unanimous that this area was appropriate to have a mooring field, basically less conflict with other lake users. That area is just really used for launching boats. There's no swimmers, no rowers, no beach, no anything like that. There's, it's a bigger area for people to get out to their moored boats, so we don't have problems with folks launching their kayaks from the trailer boat lots there. And one key thing I thought was Bog Bridge is headway speed only, i.e., you can't go fast in there at all. It's, and so you don't have any wake. It's much safer for all concerned. Limiting factor brought up by a member was that the area is rather shallow, five to ten feet deep in that area. One thing we saw was moorings over there are off of private property, the island area there. Instead, we thought that they should probably be located off of the McPeters Preserve. That area is undeveloped, and it'll stay that way. It's under Coastal Mountain Land Trust. And all, as I said, all access should be from the town-owned Bog Bridge Boat Ramp. No access going through that reserve. We don't want people parking on one oh five and heading down through the reserve to their moorings. Again, as Taylor said, we had some disagreements. Some people felt that Bog was the only appropriate area. Others said it's a good place to start, and if we needed more areas because of demand, we could look at other locations. Still, other people felt it was a good site. The Barrett's Cove was a good site as well. So this is Bog Bridge Boat Ramp. This is Boat Ramp right here. This is the area where we typically have moorings there. This is a house side here, and this is a lot that comes down like that. What we thought is having a proposed mooring area over here, this is the McPeters Preserve, and just keep it away from other people's shorefront. Barrett's Cove, majority of our group did not think this was an appropriate area for designated field. They felt there are safety issues when people are launching boats and other people are swimming out from the launch ramp to their boat ramp, their moored boats. It's a very busy section of the lake with swimmers, rowers, boaters, and shorefront owners coming and going, and it's rather narrow in there. It's more exposed to the wind, conflict with the Barrett's Cove beach area. And as I said, this is boats outside two hundred feet from shore can get up and go fast there, so you have wake and safety issues for that as well. Some other folks felt it was, it was appropriate, because it's already been authorized and approved additional dockage for the McGonacook Growing Club. It's generally a public recreation site with the Barrett's Cove and the picnic tables there and the parking. Then the launch ramp is there with a paved parking lot and a porta potty, and they said there's already a dozen moorings there as well. Other places on the lake, we just didn't feel were appropriate. Either we're, would have conflicts with shorefront owners or along the ledges there. That's a place where a lot of people swim, boat, and fish, and we didn't feel it was a reasonable place for moorings. So shorefront owners, we talked with Bill Kelly, Title Thirty-eight allows shorefront owners a mooring as a matter of privilege. So that's obviously taking into account safety and navigation. Our group believes that that should be the case, although we thought restricting that mooring to within a hundred feet of shore, rather than the two hundred foot safety zone, was more reasonable. And obviously, in coves, you split it up in three, and you can only use one third of the distance. Obviously, if shorefront owner want more than that one privileged mooring, apply to the town and the inland harbor master would sign off on a location there. As we say, basically, overnight stays, we felt were, should be prohibited. The big issue there is there's no facilities for pumping out any holding tanks or anything like that. So there's a real potential for water quality degradation from human waste on that. Now, we're going to get into a little bit of the next fault stuff. Some of this I can zip over, but basically, the harbor master should be appointed by the select board with the, you know, defined duties and responsibilities. We did not have an opinion whether an inland mooring committee, similar to the harbor committee, should be put together. Another unalterned way to do that would be any issues between the harbor master and anybody could go to the select board or the planning board or something like that. Fees by the select board for waitlist, late fees in moorings. We did not feel that the inland harbor master should have the power to actually remove a vessel from the lake, obstruction of other vessels, obstruction of navigation, discharge of refuse, that sort of thing. All that should be prohibited. Headway speed within that two hundred foot safety zone, obviously, is something that they could monitor. And obviously, if someone is breaking any of these rules, their privileges and permits could be lost through the town. Shorefront mooring area, the responsibility for placement and that would be the owner or the owner's written permission. For instance, if there was an easement across their property, and that person who had that easement wanted to put a mooring in, and all these would be registered with the town. In a designated mooring area, couple of questions, and we tried to make, recommend some answers. Who should have the mooring? We thought Camden residents and taxpayers. We were not in agreement in terms of what type of moorings could be in that designated area. Some people felt that it should be just private, non-commercial moorings only. Others felt they should be able to rent out their moorings. If you're going to have rental moorings, then you have to determine the size of what you have for ground tackle on that mooring, similar to what you have in the harbor, where, you know, a mooring, rental mooring will say up to thirty feet in length. In this case, it'd be much smaller than that, but you get the idea. Again, how does one get mooring in the designated mooring area? Some of us felt first come, first served was probably the easiest thing. You say that, you know, applications need to be in on such and such a date, and they come in, and then it's first come, first served. If all the available slots are filled, then you have a waitlist, again, first come, first served. Some people felt that if they can show they have an existing mooring out there, essentially, they should be grandfathered and get a first chance at moorings in any designated areas. Most of the rest of our recommendations generally follow the existing harbor ordinance in terms of how you renew a permit, abandonment of moorings, transferring, that sort of thing. Couple of other things we had in there was, again, we don't want people going over private property to ask access their moorings. So if the inland harbor master can show that someone was trespassing to get to their mooring, then they forfeit their mooring permit, their privileges there. And location standards, that the, where a mooring goes is not going to adversely affect aquatic vegetation, lake wildlife, or any other natural habitat, and would not interfere with navigation or fairway, that sort of thing. Moring specifications, ground tackle, the kind of buoy you have, what identification you have, those, you follow state law for the buoy color scheme and identification, and there's some fairly common standards for that ground tackle that the town could use in terms of what type of stuff you use for what size boat, and that sort of thing, and whether you take it out in the wintertime, or you put a winter buoy on, and stuff like that. So that is my quick little overview of the report we sent you guys, and I'm going to stop share on this, if that's okay with you.
Yep.
There we go. Yep. Paul, thank you very much. Questions from, what, Taylor? Did you want to also read that letter at some point? Probably should get it done pretty soon. That's up to you.
You're on mute, Taylor.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll read that letter now, and then I have a couple thoughts as well. So this was from two members of the working group, David Lyman and Brian Robinson. They were, as Paul mentioned at the beginning, they are non-shorefront owners that use, that have moorings in Barrett's Cove that they use. So a few points they have here, I'll jump right in. They said that they believe it is perhaps unfair to use the term, a majority of the group in the report, that the group had six members, and four of them were property owners and two non-lake property owners representing the general public. The need for town ordinance regarding the lake may be Tempest, may be Tempest and Teapot. In a recent conversation with the current lake warden, only three complaints have been voiced by lakefront owners, with party barges having difficulty launching their boat ramps, boats at the fifty-two ramp. In his estimation, he tells us it's less the proximity of the moorings than the lack of operator experience. Dale Doherty, he's the lake patrol person right now, that works for the Watershed Association, not the town. Dale Doherty is now a certified inland lake harbor master. It would seem to Brian and the self-residence, but not lakefront owners, that Dale knows more about the lake. And if safety issues, then do anyone, any one of us on the mooring working group. It has been our opinion from the placement of moorings, by all concern, is sufficient, and that a lengthy town ordinance is unnecessary. If the town will appoint Dale as the lake harbor master, the state already has regulations for him to follow with regard to moorings, their placement, tackle, and safety of the public on the lake. Dale and the State Harbor Masters Association have stated the major, the major issue of safety on the state's lakes is boat operator education and an experience. The list of suggestions submitted by the working group, which was heavily weighted in the favor of the lake association and lake property owners, in effect places a restriction on moorings by non-lakefront property owners. This infringes on the rights of all Camden residents, and in fact, all state residents who have equal access to the lake as do property owners. There's our contention that Dale can address any current and future issues on the lake and its safe use, given the authority. The state regulations appear sufficient at this time. If issues arise down the road, the lake harbor master is best, is the best conduit for complaints, and if needed, can make appropriate suggestions of ordinance at that time. If safety, the boat ramp, ramp is an issue, resident moorings greatly reduce the need for launching activity and parking. Boat trailers take up two parking spaces, whereas a mooring owner only uses one. Respectfully submitted, David Lyman and Brian Robinson.
Thank you.
So my kind of, my view on sort of select board action, I think, from my view, I think the select board sort of has essentially three options. We do nothing. We do nothing and things stay just the way they are, which essentially means unregulated moorings. People can go in and the town doesn't have any teeth essentially to control that. Two, we appoint a inland harbor master that would be able to follow state law. So appointing someone inland harbor master gives them essentially the authority to enforce state rules that are already on the books on the lake. And then town ordinance is already on the books as well. And then the third option is either a combination of a lake warden, an inland harbor master and a potential ordinance, which would give the town more authority to say, here is like the the group is suggesting, here is a designated mooring area. You can have moorings, but they need to be in this designated mooring area and gives us more regulation. I think those are our three options in my opinion. The the report obviously is very technical and lengthy and I think summarizes a great deal of conversation that we've had over over a year. But for me, it's pretty simple. The question is, is there overcrowding in Barrett's Cove and a user conflict? That sort of is the biggest issue that I've seen. The users being people launching boats in and out of the 52 boat ramp, the moorings that are placed in Barrett's Cove and then other users, fishing, swimming, the rowing club that's right there. So the question is, does that user conflict create a need for us saying the mooring area needs to be more designated somewhere else other than Barrett's Cove to reduce that conflict? And I think that that's sort of the question that we answer as we decide how to move forward. And I I formed an opinion, but I don't want, you know, I'm curious what what any people have for questions and.
Mark.
I I have a question. We were not the only town doing this. I believe Lincolnville was looking into this as well. Do we have any information about what they've recommended or what issues they've come and discussed?
Oh, you muted yourself.
There we go. How's that? A question, Audrey, have you recently talked with Dave Kenny up at Lincolnville about that at all?
No, I have not.
The last I heard on that, excuse me, is they plan on bringing some ordinance language to their town meeting. And the last meeting I went to up there with them is basically they don't have hardly any town-owned land on Norton Pond or McGonacook. And they looked at the Briesmer Park area and that so many competing uses there already that they decided basically they didn't feel, excuse me, didn't feel they could put a designated mooring area there. So they're going to look at ordinance language, just looking at shorefront owners, telling them where they can put them, that sort of thing.
I think another point with Lincolnville first started all this. They have, they've made it pretty clear that they don't have any capacity to enforce really any any ordinance that might be written.
Right. Mark? Mark, you had your hand up?
Actually, I'd like Mark Sigenthaler go first.
Okay, Mark Sigenthaler.
Okay, I, I'm not really here to speak on this, but I just ran across something and you're saying that one of the recommendations was to appoint an inland harbor master?
Yes.
I'm looking at the 2019 annual report and in that it says appointed town officials. And it's got inland harbor master is Dale Doherty.
Right.
And assistant inland harbor master Cody Lee.
So yeah, I think I think that's, that's a good point, Mark. That's that's been a question that's sounded around that there's some questions to whether Dale had gone to the state harbor master association's training and gotten certified. And whether the town had actually, you know, this isn't a report, but whether the town had actually taken any official action to make that happen.
Allison, you had your hand up. Allison.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess that's my largest area of interest and sort of the most urgent issue. I've often seen it mentioned in in different town documents that, you know, the select board annually appoints the inland harbor master. And then I started realizing, hmm, I've been here for a little while now and that, you know, that hasn't happened. And I guess, I mean, I I think we should do that as as soon as possible. The the moorings I I do see as as likely an issue mostly because of input that I've gotten from others, but I don't see it as the most urgent issue. Obviously, for for me, swimmer safety and the safety of kayakers and the safety of everybody in a non-motorized vessel is really first and foremost. We've had a kayaker hit on McGonacook Lake. I see all the time driving just on on Route 52 out to Lincolnville and you see that section where I am not sure that there is 200 feet on either side. If you if you go down that, you know, right along Route 52 and you see boaters going along fast with jet ski, not just he says, excuse me, um, water skiers and you know, I've always kind of wondered how that's allowed and why it isn't being enforced. I I've done a lot of scanning of Old Town documents and one of the things that I came across in the 30s that sort of always stuck with me was several times a group of citizens came to select board meetings complaining about motorboats on McGonacook Lake and how there had been all of a sudden so many of them and and people were horrified. You know, they had had this nice peaceful place where everybody could feel safe and it was tranquil and all of a sudden motorboats arrived. And of course, you know, they're they're not going away. I know that, but there's the people that could remember what it was like when you didn't have motorboats all the time. It's it definitely took something away. And the more Airbnb's we have and the more people that we have on the lake that are not necessarily familiar with local culture. I've even heard several lake property owners recently saying, gosh, there was a motorboat that went by, you know, at six o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning loud. Don't you know, don't they, don't they know that's not, you know, that's the time to have your kayak out and 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 know that, you know, that local culture that has sort of carried us through and protected McGonacook Lake all these years isn't just going to stay there on its own. So I would, I would want to move forward as quickly as possible, giving free officially creating that position of inland harbor master. And then I guess my question is whether how does that work with Lincolnville and hope? Is that something that we we would appoint that position jointly and and he could cover officially cover all of the lake? Or would that just be the Camden portion of it or?
Yeah, so that's something that we Paul interrupted me if you think I'm going off track, but so we had a, Bill Kelly came to one of the meetings and we had several questions. We presented him before he came and that was one that we talked about. And Bill's suggestion was that certainly it would be a lot easier for everybody if there's a one lake warden for the whole lake that all three towns have appointed so he can enforce things lakewide. That being said, I don't think there's any reason that that we would be restricted from appointing Dale Doherty as the Camden harbor master. And then if Lincolnville wants to follow suit, it will just, you know, he can enforce things in our side of the lake for now. And then when Lincolnville, if they choose to, gets to that point, then that would give him the ability to essentially enforce the whole lake.
Mark.
Taylor, Taylor, I have a question or Paul, I have a question. With Lincolnville not having much town land and not being able to designate a mooring area, does that mean is that is that happens that more people are going to look to come to Camden because we do have that town area? And if that's the case, if we're going to see more people coming here because of the discussion about this, then I I like the report. I like, I like the conclusions and I, you know, I don't know a lot about it, but from what I've seen, it makes sense to me. I'd like to know more what Taylor feels because he's sort of the reigning expert at the moment on the select board.
Well, I'm certainly very close to it. Ring expert, I don't know about. So I guess, yeah, I approached this really from an objective standpoint when we went into it, knowing that that the group, the working group was not in total agreement. So I thought it was really important to to hear everybody's side of things. And essentially you have, I think the two arguments are that us us in regulating those moorings infringes on people's ability and rights to use the lake as they wish. And so we looked at, the group looked at and did quite a bit of work looking at what other towns do that do have enforcement like this or regulations on the book. Paul reached out to the harbor master in town of Harrison. They have a similar inland harbor ordinance that is enforced and that's sort of the model for where a lot of this came from. So I, you know, I think Allison kind of hit the nail on the head for me, at least in part. My feeling is that you know, simply saying, nobody's saying that or suggesting that we do away with all public moorings if you don't own shorefront. I think that there's, there's no reason to do that, but I don't think it's unreasonable to say if there's congestion in a specific area that's identified, let's look at a specific mooring site. So if you're, if you want to have access to the lake and put a mooring there, you can absolutely do that. But it needs to be in this area that we've defined as the safest place to do so. And there's minimal regulation on it. So we know what's going on as opposed to people just putting moorings out. I know, Paul, did you want to add something that's?
I do.
Go ahead.
I just, in terms of that, I equate it to, it's similar to the harbor where the the town of Camden directs moorings into certain areas in the harbor. And it's not, and an inland and a harbor master down there, Steve, says, this is where your mooring is going to be. I don't think that's infringing on anybody's right. You can still have a moor in there. It's just you have to put it where the town wants you to put it.
Right, right.
Yeah, so so my thought is I think we should, we know so, we did check with Dale Doherty, who's currently the the unofficial lake warden. He works for the watershed association and he uses their boat. I think that we should appoint him, he went to a training last month with the Maine Harbor Masters Association. So he has the certification now, as I understand it, that he needs. I think that we should appoint him the inland harbor master, which would give him the ability to enforce state law given to harbor masters, which I think will make our job a little bit easier in terms of, you know, understanding what's happening out there. And I think that you know, the report right now is not an ordinance form. I think that we should, I think it's very valid. I think there's a very valid concerns put forward. Barrett's Cove might be over congested, it's not heading for over congestion.
Right.
Appoint Dale and then look at turning this into ordinance, but I think having Dale weigh in as a harbor master and what he's seeing out there on the water would be helpful in us reaching a more defined conclusion about, you know, what should be happening.
Yeah, I would agree, Taylor, with you and Allison kind of going the same way. I'm thinking yeah, I hear a lot of questions about the what goes into an ordinance as well. I know an ordinance doesn't get created overnight. Unfortunately, it takes a little time and we want to do it correctly. Of course, we always try. But if you have Dale or as appointed harbor lake master, whatever you want to call it, he he's going to develop a lot of intelligence for us on the scene on on place to reinforce some of the things that are in this report or not. I suspect they'll be reinforced, but and that'll help us to in parallel work on what element, what what may be key elements of a future ordinance. Allison.
Okay, I have just a few quick things and I'm just going to rattle through the questions and then hopefully somebody can answer them. The first is, who pays Dale's salary? And if he becomes the inland harbor master, does that mean we I would think we would want to think about maybe having him work for the town of Camden and not for the watershed association. Mostly our, I think our goals and values are really well aligned, but there is that sort of inherent conflict of interest. So just wondering about any costs associated with increasing his role or what the town would have to pay or what the watershed association pays. Then wondering how people generally get out to their moorings currently, whether it's mostly swimming or whether they have kayaks or just how that process goes. If anybody has talked with the coastal mountain land trust, if the the thought about putting a mooring field in front of preserved land, is that just moving the problem? Is there any reason to be concerned that by making this, making moorings a commodity that sort of can run out? We are going to create a frenzy that is going to backfire. I know, you know, for me right now, I don't have any reason to have a mooring on McGonacook Lake, but if all of a sudden there's a quota and it's a cap and it's first come, first serve and all this talk about can you rent it, can you not? And I wonder, even I start thinking, hmm, am I going to really kick myself later on for not getting a mooring out there? And so I guess I just worry about that a little bit. That's it.
Hey, thanks, Allison. Paul?
In terms of access to moorings, Allison, there's a number of people that will swim out to them. I've actually seen people on little blow-up rafts paddling out to their, they basically any way they can get out there, they get out to their their moored boats. There's, there's probably more swimming over at Barrett's Cove off of Route 52. And people felt that that was a potential issue. You know, if someone's trying to put his boat in or has just put his boat in and someone's swimming out there and it's no swimming off the boat ramp there anyway, there's signs up.
Why is there no, no swimming is allowed off of the boat ramp?
It's at both boat ramps, it says no swimming and and I believe that is that when they were both redone a few years ago, those signs went up primarily from a safety issue. Swimming around props.
The question of of a town of Camden, what is your, you know, on this person and who pays what and and who's control? To me, it might be if the town of Camden is trying to enforce something, the town of Camden has to take control and 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 direct this activity. What's your opinion?
Yeah, I mean, I I think we need to make no mistake about it. If we have an ordinance and we're starting to enforce it and we staff that needs to do that, we're creating a new program, we're creating a new position and we're committed to doing that. And currently we reimburse the watershed association a portion of Dale's stipend, but not the entire amount.
Right. Is there, Audrey, do you think, I had always had, I had always had it in my mind as a stipended position. Is it feasible to, if we make Dale an official harbor master from the town of Camden, could we do that through a stipended pay as a seasonal position?
I mean, I wouldn't see it as a stipend. I would see it as a seasonal position, much like the assistant harbor master.
Right.
Just a couple of other things from Allison there. Coastal Mountain Land Trust, I've been in communication with them and given them all the information and sent them the map over and showed them and discussed with them numerous times on what's going on there. To date, I have not heard back yea or nay, whether they were for it or against it, but they've discussed it with their land trust committee, so.
Audrey, is this action to bring on this summer position, that's a town policy action, is that correct?
Yes.
That's good to know.
And it would have a budgetary impact. So that's something that we that in the current draft of the FY21 budget, we've budgeted for. So it would be something to consider when the select board is doing your review of that.
Right. We were currently paying something to the association, is that correct?
Right, we were currently paying something to the association, is that correct?
What is it?
Around five thousand dollars.
Portion of it now, or that's the total?
I believe it's, I believe it's around fifty, I just saw it in the AP today, uh, it was, uh, around fifty-two hundred.
Nope, well, then that, you're saying that's what we pay or that's what?
I'm just saying that's what you're being paid now.
Oh, but not what we pay.
Uh, that's the decision that. That's, that's what we are paying to the association. Correct, and that is for, uh, lake patrol services, uh, with our boat. It's for our, uh, boat inspections and trailer inspections at the boat ramp for invasive plants. Weekly, uh, bacteria testing, uh, from Norton's pond down through the river. Um, and a number of other things helping the code enforcement officer have to go out, uh, to the islands or something like that. Uh, we help pull the buoys and string the lines for the, uh, swim area over Barrett's Cove, that's where.
Okay, so what would be the, what would be the, um. Or I guess you may not know for sure, but if he, if his duties were to be elevated to officially the inland harbor master. Do we, would his total salary need to go up and what, what portion are we currently? I guess my, my, the short version is, how much more would the town of Camden potentially need to pay? If, in order to do this, if we were to take it on as. Uh, having him a town employee and not just a watershed association employee.
Yeah, I don't think we.
Paid now for the job.
For Dale, for his year-round position, he's paid, um. Something around twenty-four thousand dollars for, uh, um, with some other stuff. This is right off the top of my head. But, um, that's roughly what it is for, and he works, uh, full-time. I mean, year-round. That's salary only, correct? No benefits, no benefits. Yeah, I think we'd have to figure out what this cost is gonna be, um, I don't have any idea what it would be. It'd surely be more than five thousand dollars a year, um, for our portion that we pay them. Uh, I don't know, I don't know, you answered your question right now, so we have to develop that, Audrey would have to.
Well, I mean, we'd have to go through a whole process. First of all, I mean, I don't think any of us really know. We'd have to identify how many hours a week we want him working on enforcement. And then we'd have to identify where he goes on the town stepping grade plan and that whole. Process of classifying his job and a job description.
There's a secondary issue of boat and, 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 and equipment is also, because right now the boat is owned by. Your group, Paul, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
So there's, there's all kinds of details that have to be filled in. I think the question we're at now, because we've done a great job, by the way, you know, Taylor and. Paul, you guys did a great job, and there's a lot of questions tonight, but I think the, we should put some more flesh on the bone, but maybe even perhaps. Crafting a, a policy and investigating what this cost might be and bring it back to the select board so we can at least take a look at, you know. Approving that concept into your point, Allison, I agree. I have no idea what the number would be. With, especially if you started adding benefits to it, it starts to climb a big, bigger, much bigger number. But I don't, we don't have that information.
If I'm, so I, I mean, I tend to think that he should be. An employee of the town of Camden and all that stuff, but there also is a shorter path. Which would just be that things stay more or less the way they are and we are just simply. Appointing him and giving him the official powers that he needs in order to be able to enforce state law out there. I mean, I'm not talking also right now about any of the, I'm saying independently entirely of the mooring situation. I guess I would really like to look for a way to, to, to make this official. As quickly as possible, because it's not a new town policy, it's in all kinds of town documents, it's, it's just something, it feels like that we've forgotten to do.
Yeah, I think that's right, Allison.
You're right, um, Audrey, what do you recommend?
Thought I'd mute my, uh, yeah, anyway. Um, I mean, it really, this is all one hundred percent select board policy. What do you want to do? What do you think is most important? If you want to do the expedient thing, then, um, it's still gonna have a budgetary impact, because I would imagine that, um, you know, with this. Sort of, uh, increased authority and expectation around enforcement of state law. Um, it's still gonna be additional hours and cost for Dale's time, so I think that's something that. And I don't know the answer to how much more time it's gonna be. Um, also, we need to understand there, what's the, what's the line between what the warden service does? And what Dale is going to be doing and how we work all that out. Um, so I think that, you know, the expedient path, we still need to figure out what's the additional cost going to be associated with that. But yes, it could be just saying that, you know, we're appointing Dale, we're giving him this authority and he's gonna stay where he is with the watershed association. And the town is just gonna, uh, increase the amount of stipend that we.
Question, I forgot about the warden service. What is the wardens, what, what's?
Right, because typically with anything other than this mooring discussion that we're having, say, we have issues with. You know, people that are going too fast on the lake or X, Y, or Z, you name it. We have the police department call the warden service and have them increase patrols on the lake. So I just don't know what the line is between that level of enforcement with us getting in touch with the warden service and what Dale is going to be doing. Because I kind of feel like this discussion was pretty confined to just moorings, and if it is just about moorings, then. You know, we can have at it with, with Dale, but if it's about anything else in terms of enforcement of rules on the lake. Service comes into play.
Right, I think the, the view from, um, from the working group was certainly that. Um, everyone seemed to agree that having an inland harbor master was a, was a helpful thing and that. Um, it was really for him to be working in terms of a complaint-based system. Primarily on things like moorings, that he, that he's not necessarily out there looking to pull people over. Um, and write summonses, that being said, you know, um, I, I think Audrey makes a good point, you know, it's a discussion that, that probably needs to be had.
Right, Taylor, can, somebody is gonna have to draft some kind of a job description for this position, so they can. Step one, what's, to Audrey's point, what is he actually looking at, moorings only or not? And then how that plays, where there is an employee, the town model one or model two would be. Uh, if he, if he's gonna continue working for the association, what that cost might be. We don't have any of that right here, we could talk about it for. A lot longer, somebody's gonna have to put some flesh on the bone here to move ahead with it ASAP. Mark, Mark.
We sort of, we've sort of gone, uh, off the rails a little bit, talking about the, the, the position. Uh, but we started with the mooring situation and I'd like to, you know, if somebody recommend a, a way to start to move forward. I think we should, uh, the one thing I, I do know about, about the lake. Uh, it's an incredible resource, we need to take care of it, we need to manage it well. Um, and my one area of expertise is Barrett's Cove, because I do go there every summer numerous times with my family. And it is very crowded there. There are, you know, people on, on boards, there are people on kayaks, there are people, there are swimmers. Um, you know, and then there's a lot of boats, um, all in a very small confined area. And so, um, I'm not at all, um, as long as we're keeping things fair for people and they can have the moorings on the lake, which is important. Just because it's in a different place, I don't think that is, is, is a serious problem. If it creates a safer area for all the people that use the lake.
I mean, I, having all of those moorings there. Lo, makes it very difficult to go flying through really fast and.
That's true.
I mean.
That's true.
I mean, I, I'll admit, I'm, I'm. That's a really good point. Boater makes me very focused on the issue of safety and very concerned about McGonagall. And so I think the, the, the mooring thing is great that it's made us. Look harder at the lake and what our roles and responsibilities are, but it's also independently of that, we need to. I would like to ask maybe that this committee or Taylor or Paul or Audra or whoever is appropriate. Get us the answers to some different models for just enforcement of current laws. Out there, what makes sense, what the warden service is capable of, what they're not, what Dale. Job description could look like, because we can solve some of those problems on a, on a parallel track and not have it. It, you know, not have our, our moored field location carved in stone first.
I would agree, I would agree with you, Allison, completely, so I, we, we gotta, uh, kind of culminate here and talk about next step forward. I think Taylor and Paul, I think we need, and Audra, we need you guys to put your heads to get it to look at, because I think Dale could look at. Issues where we, he was, give, gonna give us feedback almost on a monthly basis of where there could be speeding issues. Where there could be, whether, whether the mooring is, is in inland areas is a problem and, and help us feed this eventual ordinance kind of a. Of an approach and maybe also, you know, how we start off with this position, whether it's a, we, we pay a little more to the association. Or whether it's the employees thing, um, it, it's gotta be a phased approach. We, we don't, obviously, all the questions are being asked, we don't have all the answers. And we're gonna have to put some flesh on the bone. So I would admonish the, uh, Taylor for you guys to, and Audra to, um, you know, to try to put some ideas on paper and. And, and, and maybe not just one way of doing it, maybe two or three, you know, in terms of Dale and how we do it. But that's the most, it sounds like, and I'm hearing it consistently is, you know, the inland harbor master, we can do, we can do it quickly, we need to do it quickly. It's just a question of what the scope of the person should be, warden versus him. Safety, you know, I'd love to hear more about whether there are safety concerns with certain areas of the lake with speeders or, you know, whatever it might, whatever the issue might be. There could be a whole bunch, so does that make sense, Taylor?
Yeah, I think if the board agrees that, um, at the very least, we should, um, we should figure out the best way to move forward with. With making sure Dale's the official inland harbor master and then, um, coming up with what his responsibilities might be and, and. Like you said, Bob, putting that flesh on the bone, I think that that's the best first step to take.
Uh, that's what I'm hearing, and I, I think that would be.
Also, the warden, sir, I, I would like to make sure that. Warden service and. Flesh that out a little bit more, um, just to understand, is this a simple matter of. I mean, I think in addition, it would be no matter what, in addition to having the official inland harbor master, most likely. But we should look into whether, uh, we, we probably should just request a little bit more, um. Enforcement, I mean, we pay state taxes.
Yeah, so I agree, Allison. And I can, and I can talk to, um, the other, um, inland harbor masters and the wards. Find out how they interact and, uh, divvy up their responsibilities. Thank you so much, Paul, thanks for all your input, um, I think you've got a clear mission here, uh, Taylor, Paul, um, and. More work to do, but you're really, you're really hitting it, thanks so much. Thank you.
Have a good evening, folks.
Yeah, you too, you too, um, on to the, uh, um, next item of the agenda, which will be the approval of our, um. Wind jammer agreement, um, and you all have it in your packet, um. I presume you've taken a look at them, and this is specifically regarding the, the wind jammers at the landing and at the, um. The, um, harbor park floats, um, um, there's two separate, um, a base agreement, two separate, some, uh, subs. Subset agreements for each of those two groups. Um, I'll open it up to any comments of, or, or anybody have any comments on those documents? Allison.
Um, just, just quickly, I have one thing I have not had a chance to do is read, um. The letter that we received, is that something that?
Oh, yes, no, I have it, I have it.
Like word for word from the?
Yes, I'm gonna read that, I, that's part of this, uh, I just wanted to see, see if you had any questions to start with, but I do have a letter from Ray Williamson, I have to read it to the record.
Oh, okay, I, I don't mind when you do it, I just wanted to make sure that I.
Thank you.
Better informed if I had actually read this, so I might.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll read it now. Good segue, thank you, Allison, um, we did receive a letter today from, um, uh, to us, the Camden Board of Selectmen. And I'll read the letter, it's from, um, Captain Ray Williamson, one of, of Maine Wind Jimmer Cruisers. And Ray says, quote. Thank you, thank, thank you, thank you all for what worked hard to produce these documents and thank. To the town itself for allowing us the privilege of sailing from the beautiful and historic harbor. While discussing the wind jammer leases, I request that you consider the following and take whatever action feels appropriate. The present circumstances with the coronavirus situation are devastating to the entire cruise industry, but particularly to our unique sector. We are mom and pop business that are more about preserving a way of life than making millions of dollars. Giant corporations with billions of dollars will survive this pandemic, but will small businesses? The federal government has set aside trillions of dollars to protect the economy, but as you can see, the vast majority of that has gone to big corporations. I bring that up not as a complaint, but a state of fact. We have had some limited benefit from the small emergency SBA loans, which will help us get through. Uh, fit out, I guess, through the fit out, uh, of the boats in time of significantly depressed advanced reservations. We track monthly reservations as a way to gauge our prospects for the upcoming season. At the end of February, we were fifteen percent ahead of last year and looking forward to a good season. Since the pandemic has started, we've gotten virtually no reservations, in fact, cancellations are coming in at an alarming rate. We have pushed back the start of the season by a month, and will likely be for us to move it back even further. As it stands now, we are approximately thirty percent behind where we stood last year with the expectation it'll get worse. At this point, we cannot even be certain that we will have a season at all, but we carry on preparing, hoping for the best. To fill out and operate a wind jammer costs hundreds of thousands of dollars each year. This investment allows us the opportunity to seek a modest living for our families while providing the public with an important connection to our maritime heritage. It seems the prospect of any financial gain this season is unlikely, the question is how big will our losses be? We certainly must continue to maintain our vessels regardless of the potential income or lack thereof. The ability to carry on this local tradition is really what matters. At this time, I would like to request that the town of Camden forgive the first half of the wind jammer lease payments. Which are now due as a show of support for this industry, which so uniquely defines our community. Thank you for your time and consideration, respectfully, Captain Ray Wilson. Again, that letter was written today, um, Audrey, I think you can make a comment as to how we've been handling. Both day sailor and wind jammer, uh, fee payments to date.
Yes, anyone who's, uh, requested a deferral of payment, we've, we're allowing that. We understand that, you know, it's, their industry is gonna be particularly hard hit by all of this and. Also, when we're going through the budget review process, I think we need to take that into account when we're looking at, um, expected fees. That we're gonna collect from both.
Yeah, I, I did have the opportunity to speak to, well, a couple of day sailors and, and today was, when Jimmer captain. And it's basically said that and said, you know, we, in, in, in fairness, we are kind of taking things one month at a time also. We don't know what tomorrow may bring, but right now I had relayed what Audrey just said, that we are not enforcing the due dates. For the payment of any, any or all of the, um, fees that are in these agreements. And we, we, we will continue to assess that as we have so far.
Just to clarify, I'm certainly in support, I think of. Some, some kind of forgiveness or deferral for, um, businesses where we can. I think we did that with, um, side country sports at the snowball and, uh, but I. Do you think it's a, so this kind of thing can't just be, um. Done through staff decisions, that it'll, that, that's a slippery slope that ultimately puts staff in. A difficult position and that all of that kind of stuff should come to the select board for an official vote. Um, also, I don't, it appears to me that what Ray is asking is not, um. Deferral of the due date, it's forgiveness. So, you know, should we look at that as, as a similar situation to, to side country? And it looks like most likely we'll be getting more of these types of requests and we better come up with something. Um, fairly consistent and thought out as a, as a policy before we get ourselves into trouble. My inclination would be to. as a, as a policy before we get ourselves into trouble. My inclination would be to, um, be as, as flexible and, um, forgiving as, as possible, as long as that doesn't put us in a, a difficult budget situation. So.
Yep, okay. Mark, you had your hand up.
Yeah, um, I, I, I think it's, it's obvious that we will be forgiving uh, as the case may be, like we were a side country, side country was dealing with their closures right now. Um, we don't know yet how it's gonna work out and, and I'd like to have more facts before we start to, um, cancel for debt. I think that we probably will, uh, based on circumstances and what's gonna happen. Um, and so I want all the, the sailors, day and wind jammers to know that we're obviously aware and concerned and willing to work with whatever will happen as soon as we know that, you know? And knowing already now that they, they're not, the payments are not due, uh, I think is a good start. And then we'll just deal with it as the case may be as we have the facts.
Taylor. Give me the Taylor.
Sorry, um, I agree with both Allison and Mark. They, they sort of nailed it. I had, I had a concern as well after I read that letter that, um, you know, how do we define who gets forgiveness and or deferment and who doesn't? Um, you know, cause ultimately, you know, businesses asking us to forgive their taxes do. Um, and I think that, that, um, Mark said it well, that, that no reason why we can't defer payments while we let this unfold and see what the impact actually is on these businesses. Um, but I think it's really important for us to be as lenient and, and helpful as possible because the small businesses are relying on all the help the big can get. And, um, I, you know, I wanna be empathetic and supportive of all of them.
Yeah, I would agree. There's, um, there's, you know, in some parts of the country, um, certain uh, federal regulations have closed down certain water activities, um, that happened. To my knowledge, that hasn't happened yet in Maine. It could, and it'd be a symbol to side country sports kind of things. There's a lot of developments that are still developing and I think we'll know pretty soon, um, how that policy should be crafted and what we should do. Cause I, I, I worry about bed and breakfast. I worry about, uh, you know, licenses and fees for that, when businesses may not be able to open. It goes on and on and on. Mark Ratner.
Um, one of the things I wanted to say is, you know, we've acknowledged, we're aware of it. I'm gonna get, I'd like to get back to the, the, the agreements and, and ask some questions. The agreements are pretty much the way they've been with, uh, we, we did change the dates, I believe, to make them uniform. Um, but at the pretty standard agreements, we haven't made any major changes. So I don't, I don't see any reason not to approve the agreements and go ahead with that and then, you know, work forward with whatever changes as things may happen. But I wanted to sort of move it forward.
Sure, sure. Um, Mark Sigenthaler, I didn't get a chance to talk with you, but I did have the opportunity to, uh, talk to the, uh, library director and the chair of the, um, library trustees this weekend, um, uh, to get their input on some of the, um, matters that were in the, uh, the wind jammer agreement, sub-agreement for the, the, I believe Marcus, three, three boats over at the, at the library Harbor Park, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, good news was we were able to come to a rather succinct, um, rewording of one of the paragraphs here regarding notice and notification to the library to clarify that, because as you and I both know, that's been up in the air for a little while. And, um, I, I have, and they have approved of this, this, uh, well, modification to the wording of paragraph C, if you wanna hear it. Um, it, uh, it, uh, it, it, we've had some discussions about this written notification thing that you and I both know. We talked about a number of times. Um, they've, they've, um, agreed to the, basically, uh, that the, the licensees will notify both the harbor master and the library director of their posed overnight and day sail schedules in advance, but in no circumstance less than forty-eight hours and that's it. So that's a little bit, little bit different from what is crafted right, not usually in, in paragraph C, but it clarifies this bit of a confusion about, uh, from the past where we had, uh, and written, written notification by the wind jammers to the library for, um, sales off that. All they're looking for is just notification, but no less than twenty, forty-eight hours notice. So that's the only thing that I would, a minor thing that I had seen that might, that should be changed in the agreement. Otherwise, I think, Mark, you guys did a great job of crafting the, uh, structure of both day sailor and wind jammer agreements with the main agreement plus the sub-agreements. In this case, there are two sub-agreements, one for the, uh, boats at the landing and one for the boats over by the library. Um, uh, and I, I don't know, I can give this, this wording to whomever needs it. The only other comment I had was again, I, I don't think the chair of the select board should be signing operating agreements for the town. I don't have an operating position. Um, that is Audrey's domain. I know it was done that way in the past, but I'd like to get that corrected also. Make sense, Mark Sigenthaler?
Uh, as, as far as the signing goes, I, I, I guess I would defer to Audra.
Audra?
Yeah, I mean, that seems to be how we're doing everything else. So if you wanna defer that to me.
Well, it's an, it's an operating job and the, the select board is not in operations position. So I don't think the chairman should be signing. That's just my opinion. I'll sign if you want me to, but I don't think you should.
That's the same thing we do with the day sailors, is that correct? I think, cause I think we talked about this with the day sailors.
Yes, I made the same comment then, yes.
Right.
Same comment for every different signing event that we, that we have. And I think it's, it's right, but it's not that it's an operations thing and Audrey gets assigned because she gets to decide. It's that she's in the best position to know that she's been authorized to, to do that.
I agree.
Cause we all. Camps on it right now anyway, so.
Right. Other than those two changes, I didn't see anything in those agreements that I, that I had any objection to.
So the, uh, the, uh, library notification. I, I know the wind jammers were a little bit concerned how the wording was on that. So I, I, I guess looking for a little bit more clarification for them and what that means. They have.
From the library?
By the library for every sale?
They, they, but, but the language they agreed to was they, the library would like to know what their schedule is for wind jammer cruisers, which is usually, they usually have an entire summer, usually not always. And, and they'd like to see a schedule for their day sales, but with no less than a forty-eight hour notice. Now, if they wanna send them an email, they wanna, you know, drop by and talk to Nikki, as long as they know, they just wanna make sure that, um, they coordinate in case there's a sale being planned on a time when the Harbor Park is being used for art in the park. But, you know, I'm just exaggerating here, but that's all they're looking for.
Okay.
That's it. So, you know, notification, one second, Allison, notification can be in any form they wanna do. They, they just wanna know that uh, XYZ boat might go out on Friday for an, a dinner sale. Uh, or if they have an entire schedule for the summer, provide that to the, to the library director and the harbor master.
From some of the feedback I got from the captains, um, I, I think it was unclear of where that notification should go for the library committee. So if you could put that in there, I think it would be helpful.
The words, the words that are in here says the library director, that's Nikki Manounis.
Okay.
They can get that email address online if they want, but that is very specific in the language, just the harbor master and the library director, period.
Okay.
Right. Allison, you had a question?
Um, yeah, sorry. I'm having trouble finding the language here, but what, um, the, the power outlets that are over there? How does that work? They pay for the power, but we own the outlets.
Are you talking about Harbor Park?
What, just, yeah, what, what are the rules and what's the setup surrounding act, surrounding power for, you know, over there on the Harbor Park side?
Okay. So the way that's been explained to me is that power is paid by the wind jammers. It's owned by the wind jammers and it's a very loose agreement. When there are functions at Library Park, they just casually tap into that power.
But over on the public landing side, power is paid by?
That, that would be Ray. And the way I understand it, there's a separate meter for Ray's boats.
On the public landing side?
Public landing, yes.
I guess, um, since we have some power, there's not much power over on the Harbor Park side at all. And occasionally people do need to plug into something that's possible over on the public landing side for just the general public, um, and, but if you try to do that over on the Harbor Park side, then not allowed. I would like there to be some way to plug in for, like without it having to go through the wind jammers over there, since it is infrastructure that the town owns. And this is kind of minutia, I guess, but it's not really minutia if you're over there and you really wanna try your cell phone, um.
Well, doesn't, this, isn't that an issue that Audrey and the town should take a look at, not the wind jammer agreement?
Or the Library Park Library Committee?
Uh, I, good point, Allison. I get your point. Um, but as I understand it, the stanchions for, uh, am I correct, Mark, that the stanchions over on the dock are the one-ten standard boat connectors? Is that correct? Yeah. And that would, something would have, and you're, and Allison, I think you're talking about one-ten outlets for people to use, is that correct?
There are outlets over there, um, but you can't use them. And I was just wondering, is there anything in the, is there language, there's like this foggy situation, is there language in the agreements relating to power? Or is that, does that exist elsewhere?
Yes.
Where is that?
For providing their own power.
Providing their own power?
Yes.
But all of the, all of the, the whole float system and everything there is owned by the town. I mean, and the library power, you know, that whole arrangement. Town and library, did they have in? Am I be, um, like, how does that?
Well, what, what it currently says, Allison, is the, uh, Camden should have no responsibility for the provision, maintenance, repair of any utility services for the benefit of the licensee, jumping ahead, but not limited to electrical power, telephone and water. That's what it currently says. Janice, did you have something?
Uh, I've got a bunch of YouTube comments here. I didn't know if you wanted to hear what they were saying, wind jammers.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, uh, let's see. First, Eric King says, um, so we need to send the library, I see the schedule as well as know, notify them of day sales. Wind jammer Angelie, our schedule is always available online. Captain Barry King, the schooner Mary Day is the current owner of utilities. He also says, all of the wind jammers at the head of the harbor split and share the bill.
Okay, perfect.
The town does not own those utilities. They're owned by the wind jammers.
Yeah, and, and to the comment, uh, good comments, by the way. That's great. It's working.
Own, how can they own? Do they have an easement through Harbor Park?
One second. Audrey has her hand up. Audrey?
I would, I would say that because they've, um, you know, paid to run electricity out there and
That's correct.
have it available for their boats and they have an agreement where they share the cost of distributing that electricity, that if we want something that's available for general public use, that we look at it separately, um, you know, from, from these agreements. Because, you know, the agreements of, sorry, Janice.
It's okay, finish.
Uh, yeah, so the, the agreements just specifies that it's not the town's responsibility to provide that power and they've gone to the trouble of, you know, organizing that themselves. So if we are interested in doing something
Different.
So that it's available to, to more users of the, uh, Harbor Park area, then we look at that.
That's a town function, I agree.
That was my question was whether, are they just paying the bill or did they actually, there must have been some agreement at some point where they actually have installed. So they do, okay.
That's, that's a good question. Um, to the question about the person that made a comment about the, uh, schedule is on the website, that's great. If that schedule is changed, all they need to do is, uh, send Nikki a note, an email and said the schedule is already published and it's, it's on the following website. That's notification. Now, that presumes that schedule might not change. And if, if one of the boats decides to go into a, uh, uh, a day sail or two, um, they, that may not be, uh, necessary schedule. But if it is added to the schedule or, or the schedule changes, they should notify the library director and the harbor master and schedule change. Just to notice that the, that the, uh, schedule online has changed. That's all I have to do. Um, but, uh, are there any other comments on the agreements? Other than?
Canada or something.
Well, there's just one more comment on YouTube.
Yep.
Barry King says that they paid to have those installed. And I think it was back in like two thousand and seven, there was some type of agreement about the power there. I can probably find the specifics.
Yeah, we should clarify. I think, I think it's a good idea. This, this, um, as it, as it's written, it's very clear that, uh, it, it's theirs to provide and to pay.
There was quite a bit of conversation about that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure. Um.
Well, I know who to go to now for.
Good. With that, um, do we have a motion on these agreements? With, with the one, with the modification to paragraph C, which I, I can provide to you, Mark, and, 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 uh, and then, and I can provide to, uh, Kendall, whomever, to make sure we get that into the final document.
I'll make a motion that we approve the wind jammer agreements and addendums.
Second.
Yeah, with, with the one change, correct?
The one change.
Okay. And who, Taylor, you seconded?
Sure.
Okay, any more discussion? Uh, all the eyes, Allison first.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
And Bob, the same. Mark, thanks for all the hard work. You did a great job. Um,
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much. With the select board's approval, I'm going to make a little adjustment to the agenda because we have two, uh, people, two days online here. And I noticed that the only agenda, the approval of the, uh, bids, uh, prices for the repairs to the town hall opera house is the last item on the agenda and I'm not gonna drag them through the rest of this stuff. So with your approval, we'll bring item twelve, which is the bid awards for the Camber, Camden Opera House building repairs to the next item on the agenda. Is that okay with Dave and Dave?
That's great. Thank you.
Of course. Here, we still have Dave Saylor on?
Yes, sir.
Good, good, good. Okay, um, I believe, um, I didn't, I know what the bids are. I didn't look in the package and I assumed. Um, as I understand it, there are three, um, proposals. Uh, one is a bid award proposal for the Camden Opera House building, which is basically one of our that prepares generally, uh, Dave, you can go in more detail, but it's basically to repair the brickwork and especially the Washington Street side, the repointing on the, um, other side of the building, fix the bricks, uh, that are falling off in the top of the building and a lot of the fascia up there. The, the second proposal is for reinstall, repair, non-repairing placing, reinstalling copper gutters, uh, across the building and the, and the turrets. And lastly is the proposal to provide the ice dam system to prevent, um, the, uh, the, uh, ice dam potential and, uh, we've had in the past on the gutters and downspouts. Um, did I get that right, Dave and Dave?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Um, and those proposals are for the gutter work, if I can summarize them again, as a, a sticky thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars price. The copper batteries in the building, the twenty, uh, gutters, um, installing some new gutters, especially along the, uh, the, uh, I think we have four turrets, I believe. Um, and then the second is for the ice system, which is, was bid originally and then requoted now for the, uh, provision of a, um, uh, um, heating panels along the roof edge, heating cables along the gutters and downspouts and that price is, uh, twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. And the other one, uh, was with, um, repointing mortar joints on the wall, a right side wall, phase one. Uh, let, they, they, right side, left side, you're facing the building, left side would be repairing the, uh, the damaged brick. let, they, right side, left side, you're facing the building, left side would be repairing the, the damaged brick, and in both cases, setting up, th- this is not a cheap one, it's $130,690, they will be setting up scaffolds on both faces of the building, the so-called left and the so-called right, to be able to do a more effective job of of repointing, resurfacing the brick on, on, especially on the Washington Street side, is that correct, Dave?
Bob, I think that the, the one quote for the brick repointing work has three components to it.
Yeah.
First component is $130,690.
Right.
Doing the Washington Street side, that's repointing the whole, the whole side of that building. The other part is $20,134, that's for
Right.
repointing and repairing the three bows at the top, by the gutters on the zoot side, and then the 700, 7,350 is for repairing all the brickwork behind the gutter work itself on the other parts of the building.
So there are three components, so.
Three components of that, one quote, and you are correct on the other two.
Okay, so the, just to, just to give you the total for the restoring the brickwork and the repointing, and hopefully, and we believe strongly that the, the leakage, that, so Dave Morrison doesn't have to have an umbrella over his desk, is, a total of that is $158,174, Dave. That's the total of those three fate, those three, those three chunks you just mentioned.
Yes.
Any comments, Mark?
Yeah. Dave and Dave, are, are you happy with both of the, all, all three of these quotes?
I am happy with the fact that we're going to be getting the building repaired. I mean, I would love to see these quotes be less, but the reality is, this is a big job, it's, the building, the building really needs it, I think if you go any longer, or go through another winter without having the work done, you'll be in bad shape. We all know that the French Conference Room was leaking water during this, this winter. I, I'm happy with it, I think it's going to be a matter of managing it, and making sure that all the work's completed satisfactorily, but I think in the end we'll end up with a good product, but this work isn't cheap.
Dave Morrison?
I agree with everything Dave said. I, I also know that it's, it's a hard time to get folks to work fairly quickly, everyone is scheduled a year out, so I'm glad that, that Dave was able to pull all this together, because that took a little bit of doing, I think.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dave and Dave?
Yeah.
I just had one question.
Jody? Jody, is that Jody?
Yeah, I just, I got the brick, could you please repeat the gutter bid?
The gutter, sixty, sixty-three, seven fifty.
Yeah, I'll, I'll repeat them as part of my motion if, if.
Thanks, Mark.
I think Taylor had a question.
Taylor?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I'm sure the answer is yes, I'm just gonna, I'm curious how confident we are that the, this ice melt, ice blaster system is the right thing for the job and how we arrived there.
Well, I don't know, there's lots of debate, the problem, the problem the building has is the roof is not, is not.
No, I, I get that, I just, you know, there's more than one way to, to solve a problem, so I'm just, I'm, want to make sure that Dave and Dave, I guess, they sit, they try, when anybody is confident that they have faith in this system lasting.
I, I have, I can, I can go over that with you, Taylor, so I think that to repair the problem associated with leaking and the, the falling ice from the building, there's several things that we have to do, and I don't think these things are going to completely take care of every bit of it. I think there may be some additional things that need to be done, that might be part of the IGA that we're doing with Siemens, but I think this is going to take care of a good majority of the problems. I think it's like a belts and suspenders type of approach, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of all the issues that we possibly can through engineering controls, but I think one of the final ones that we, that are not incorp, that is not incorporated in this is the potential for the attic space to have some additional insulation, so that space isn't influenced by the heating of the rest of the building. I think once those, once all of those things are done, I feel pretty confident that we've addressed all of the things that we possibly could do to prevent ice from falling off the roof and from the building leaking, so.
Like, if I could just add to what Dave just said, another thing that this project will have is that we're adding some additional gutters on the dormers, which I think will make a big difference, particularly with freezing on the sidewalk below, and we're adding additional snow fence around those dormers, and, and I think that will go a long way towards the concerns about snow and ice coming off the roof, because I think the dormers have been a real area of concern in the past.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, thanks, guys.
True.
I don't think any one thing can resolve all of the problems that we're trying to address.
No, no, Siemens, to Dave's, Dave Sayloron's point, Siemens did note on the building walkthrough that the uninsulated roof is an issue, and it's just something that we'll try to address, as Dave Sayloron said, through the, the IGA is the industrial grade audit, which Siemens is doing, there's a couple of factors that may be able to work through that program, that might help us to fund that piece, not have to put out this chunk of change we're talking about here, which is totaling two ten, like two hundred, ten, two hundred.
Two fifty-one, three twenty-four.
Quarter million dollars, total.
All right, so in regards to the money part of this, so what you have available, there was $120,000 budgeted for this financial year for repairs to the building, and that was done as a CIP, and in addition to that, we have $100,000 available in a reserve account for Opera House maintenance, so, you know, this is a $250,000 project, and we have $220,000 available. So your, your options are, you can budget an additional $30,000 in this coming FY21 budget. However, we know that that still has to go through all these approval processes with, you know, town meeting and, and voters, and at this stage, the draft of the budget that the budget committee has looked at doesn't have
Right.
you know, additional $30,000 for this project, so, you know, you could look at doing that, or just sort of holding off on one component of this until you know whether or not you have that funding.
Didn't we have twenty-something thousand dollars once in the budget for doing the ice shield melt stuff?
Well, you had $120,000 for
Okay.
gutters, the ice shield, and some repointing, but now that we know that, you know, much more extensive repointing needs to be done, and we've gotten the recommendation that it's better to do it all kind of at once, you know, that's why we're looking at a lot more money, and also, you know, to be candid, we would be sort of that $100,000 in that reserve account, we would be draining that reserve, which, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, you know, there hasn't been a large maintenance project on this building in quite some time, so I think it's definitely needed, and this is what that reserve account is for, so you can look at in future years, you know, adding that account to, yeah, so I think that that's, I, I recommend definitely, you know, using all the funds available in that account, it's really that last $30,000 worth of difference, and, you know, either budgeting FY21 to do some of this work, or, you know, deferring a smaller piece of this project.
Those are, are those are, but, should somebody call, can someone?
Allison.
You're saying those are only two options, do we not have anything left in contingency?
Sure.
Yes, you could certainly use contingency, that is an option as well.
And then I also think there was some money, a reserve account set up for energy improvements, or an energy, what do we call it, energy audit, energy?
Well, Allison, to your point.
House, which, this.
Well, there's, there's.
There's an energy conservation account, and there's almost $37,000 available in that.
Well, we also have the public safety building money, $35,000, that we're not going to spend on that building either, because of the Siemens project.
I would say, though, that because that was specifically voted on for that purpose, it really needs to be spent on the public safety building.
Okay. My point is, I think there are places to find $30,000, and this building has been such disrepair for so long, that I have to agree with Dave Sayloron, you need to do it and do it right, deferring a piece of it is, doesn't, I mean, we'd be picking for 30,000 bucks, I mean, I agreed, 158,000 is a whopper total for the building, but it is in disrepair.
I mean, half from content, from Select Board contingency, and half from the energy conservation reserve.
Yeah.
You know, fifteen and fifteen, that, I, I don't want to defer any of this.
Yeah, I would recommend not deferring any of it, I think all of it's urgent, we've gotten to that point where it's all urgent.
Yeah, Mark, you had your hand up.
I, I'm ready to make a motion. Let's, let's go to that. Okay, I make a motion that we award the, the bid awards as following for the gutter replacement work for a total of $63,750 for ice dam prevention. That will be for a total of $29,400. And then for the repointing of all the joints, there are three different parts of it here, for the first part, for $130,690, the second part for $20,134, and the third part for $7,350, and I would make a motion that we take Allison's suggestion for raising the additional funds that we need.
Second.
Second, Taylor, any further discussion? Your favorite, Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob, aye also. Dave and Dave, thank you very much for all your hard work, I think this is going to be so exciting to get this done. It's, we've just, I think we all agree, it needs it, we're going to get up into the 21st century. Audrey?
So just for the purpose of the record, when Kendall's doing meeting minutes, can we specify that you voted in favor of $120,000 out of the FY20 CIP for the Opera House, $100,000 out of the Opera House building reserve account, $15,000 out of Select Board contingency, and $15,000 out of the energy conservation account?
So, so amended.
All's in favor, Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Jenna?
Aye.
And Bob, aye also. Thank you for clarifying that, Audrey, that's really important, thanks, thanks, guys, and glad you didn't have to wait till the end.
Oh, thank you very much, everybody.
Take care.
You have a good night.
So, let me get back on my agenda here.
So excited about those nine bricks.
Our seventh item on the agenda, going back to order, is the, we have the two names that have been recommended to be added to the Village Green Honor Roll, and that those two individuals are Christopher Nolan and Robert Milliken. Any comments to Select Board? Allison?
Um, it, they look good to me, but we're, having just gone through that very arduous process of trying to improve the process that we use, I'm not seeing anything from the Legion saying, you know, with their recommendation, which was supposed to be, they did the, oh, yeah, Janice?
They did. I've been doing it through email with Doug Stukford, I sent them to them first, and then he lets me know, and they approved it, and those have been approved by them. Both of the applications have already been seen by them.
Okay, they looked clear to me, because they did on the, you know, DD 214 that we've all come to go and appreciate, they, they do reference Camden as, but, you know, they were, there's examples of simple cases, but just maybe for next time, if we, like, the email from the.
Yep.
Yeah, should be included, I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, I would move that we add, that we approve the addition of Christopher Nolan and Robert Leroy Milliken. Actually, I should probably make it, I, I missed the middle, of Christopher J. Nolan and Robert Leroy Milliken to the Village Green Honor Roll.
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Bob, aye also. Congratulations, Chris, and God bless you, Mr. Milliken. Onto, well, we have three, we have public hearings, as is normal, and the, in the situation, we would normally read the full public hearing process, the public hearings, as we all know, are for the purpose of getting Select Board some information from the public on the matters at hand. Since we don't have a public president, we requested any comments to be submitted prior to 3:00 PM today, and I don't believe, Janice, we received any comments on these licenses?
I don't know, did I put the cover sheet from the police department in there?
Yes.
Yes.
They're there.
Just, but no public comments?
Oh, no, I thought you meant from the police.
No, no, the police department stuff is in there, so.
Yeah, no, I haven't received.
Okay, so there's no public comment, we'll close the public portion of this hearing and revert to Select Board deliberation on the application of Abigail's Inn at 8th High Street for a new Class V Bed and Breakfast liquor license.
Are we doing one at a time, Bob?
I'll be, yeah, let's do one at a time.
I didn't see any issue with any of them, so I moved that we approved the application of a Class V, so let me start that over again, application of Abigail's Inn at 8th High Street for a new Class V Bed and Breakfast liquor license.
Second, I do have a comment to make. These, these are new owners at Abigail's Inn, and they've done intensive renovations, and I'd just like to welcome them to town, and wish them, obviously, a tough time to get started, but looking forward to their great success, joining us in Camden.
Thank you, Mark. All's in favor, Allison? Would you have a comment, Allison?
I, I just have a, well, I'll save it for the end.
Okay. All's in favor, Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Bob, aye. The second item is for the application of the Heartstone Inn at 41 Elm Street for the renewal of a Class V Hotel liquor license.
I moved that we approved the application of the Heartstone Inn at 41 Elm Street for a renewal Class V Hotel liquor license.
Second.
All's in favor, Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Bob, aye also. Thirdly, the application to Camden House of Pizza at 12 Mechanic Street for renewal of a Class III Wine and Class IV Malt Liquor License.
I moved that we approved the application of the Camden House of Pizza at 12 Mechanic Street for renewable Class III Wine and Class IV Malt Liquor License.
Second.
All's in favor, Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
And Bob, aye also. Thank you very much, and with that, we will close the public hearing and revert back to our agenda item nine, which is the approval of two mutual aid agreements. Audrey, do you want to leave the discussion on those two?
Bob Allison has a question.
I'm sorry, Allison, I'm sorry.
So, so my, my general comment was about the 3:00 PM deadline for comments, which I'm seeing pop up in a few different places on the things that we put out, and I understand that that's more convenient for us, but I would encourage us to try to stick more to the, you know, the intention of the emergency state mandate that says that we can do all of this remotely, but we have to provide a way for the public to participate. By it's it's like a little bit contradictory to what we've said before where you can comment, you know, you can email us, you can comment on the live on YouTube channel.
Yep.
Um so I would just kind of want to remove in the future that three P M. deadline.
Okay, we can do that. We can do that. That's not a problem or or put that plus the YouTube comments, either one. We can add that to it. Just so people have the ability to comment if that's, I think the only requirement is I understand that Bill, you have to provide him an opportunity to be able to comment during the process.
Right, you um by identifying sort of an order or procedural order from the uh select board in your agenda item as to when and how you expect the public comment to come in, that is sufficient. I understand Allison's point, but um a lot of boards function like that across the state where you you never actually get to uh participate live. You have to prefile as much as you'd like with whatever you'd like. Uh but that's sort of subject to these types of procedural orders, so it's not infirm, it's just um a way to do it.
Yeah, so but but my point is more about what we should do than what we have to do. That said, we didn't, you know, we're having issues with the website and so the public packet wasn't even available to be accessed and it's just better and you know, people should try to get them in earlier, but we should, you know, we should just try to take comments at any time considering we get so few of them.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with comments. We went this route because of twenty second delay. That's the only problem with YouTube and making comments. That's the only other mechanism to comment. But um I whatever select board wants to do is fine with me. Any other comments on this regard? Mark, Taylor, Jenna?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Again, onto the approval of mutual aid agreements, two of them. Audra, you want to introduce these or?
Yes. So the first one is just for all law enforcement agencies within Knox County, so it covers um all of the local police departments. So ourselves, Rockport, Rockland, Thomaston, as well as the Sheriff's Department. And it's really a very, very loose mutual aid agreement, just saying that um you know, basically uh in any sort of emergency event, um all the law enforcement agencies in the county will back one another up. Um but it's incredibly loosely written um and that was done by design. Um so that's really the first one. And then the second one is just to sort of formalize an informal relationship between ourselves and the city of Belfast where our code enforcement officers have been providing backup for each other to do, you know, inspections and other um you know, duties when one might be off on uh vacation or not available. So again,
Know that was a thing.
federal loose language and um a lot of it, you know, a lot of it has come down to there was a a previous working relationship between these two code enforcement officers when they worked uh at the city of Bangor together. And so um we don't see this being sort of a long term agreement necessarily, like if if you know, both the code enforcement officers are with um both of our abilities for quite a while, I see this continuing, but it's nothing that would obligate us to back up Belfast and vice versa in the event that there were a change of personnel. It's really come down to, you know, we have two staff members who are very um comfortable working together and comfortable providing this sort of backup to each other and wanting to sort of formalize this relationship.
Mark Retner?
Um I just, I noticed that uh that the the law enforcement one is is makes so so much sense. Um that we cover each other. It's perfect sense. I did not see anything about the Belfast one in the packet at all, so.
Yeah.
There. Nothing there we need to note about that?
Um, yeah, I mean, since it didn't make it, because I wasn't, I wasn't certain if it was gonna make it because um you know, we had to uh get something drafted that also went to the city of Belfast, so we can always hold off until next meeting. It's nothing urgent.
I
Allison?
I I guess I'm also a little confused about that because I didn't realize any of that was going on, that is that just a coronavirus thing or?
Yeah, it's been mostly coronavirus related.
Oh.
Audra?
Yes.
Can I just um also speak to, um this also goes for plumbing inspections, um just so you know, Allison. Our fire inspectors, you know, they are assisting Steve. And they're doing a great job helping him do inspections, um but they are certified in in not everything. Um and they are never, they were never really intended to get certified as plumbing inspectors. Um I, both of these um inspectors, code officers work for me up in Bangor and honestly, they are some of the top notch guys um in this field. Um and this is, you know, they communicate often together uh on trying to make projects work for people, figuring out um, you know, ways to get through things. Um this is come up from time to time where they have um you know, for one reason or another, needed um assistance or another look on the project, or if someone was out and they needed a plumber needed emergency inspections done. And that's primarily what, how we're handling it right now, just so you know.
Well, I guess the question comes onto the Belfast ones not in the packet. Do we want to table that until next time?
That's fine. And I I think in Belfast, it's still going through their process too.
Okay, so we should um at least address the Knox Knox County Law Enforcement Agreement.
Ready, I'll make a motion that we approve the um mutual aid for the Knox County Law Enforcement Agencies.
Discussion, all those in favor, Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Bob, I, five eyes. Um so we'll table the Belfast Code Enforcement Office till next time or whenever it's uh whenever it's available to put on the agenda. The next time.
May I ask a question about that?
Yes, Jenna.
Does this have anything to do with the change in uh leadership in Belfast?
No.
Okay, so this is something that we've come up with on our end.
Yeah, and I've actually had discussions with um Belfast Planning Development Director about this in the past. Um and it just seemed like um, you know, something was just needed, especially during this um this this crisis that we're dealing with right now. Um but they have, and this goes back for, this goes back many years and it's not unique. Um you know, code officers are, there's not many of them out there in this in this state. Um not many qualifiers out there and um this has been going on for for quite some time, um as I understand. Um it's going through the years, but but Steve and Bob um are are, they work great together. Um they, looking at the same things, they, you know, it's, yeah, it's not, it's not a new thing. It's been in the works for a while.
Okay, I've just, I haven't heard previously about as quite as many ties to Belfast from Camden, so I'm just curious as we continue to talk about these things and I'm all for regionalization when it makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, guys.
Sure. On on to item ten on the agenda, which is to discuss uh uh in or approve or not the proposed Camden Rockport Broadband Task Force. Um Jeremy, do you want to lead the intro here or or?
Sure, sure, that's fine. Um and I think everyone knows um that for the last many months, there's been a ad hoc group, um nothing formal, um you know, from either Rockport or Camden. Um nothing formal, but there's been a group working together of um Rockport and Camden elected officials, and I say elected officials, one select board member from each town has been sitting in on this group. Um and then um some volunteers and some staff from each town and some committee members from Camden um have sat together working on, this has been an ongoing issue um in Rockport and Camden and I mean frankly, as everyone knows across the state. Um and about trying to figure out ways to explore different options for broadband so that um you know, people can educate from home, they can work from home, they can, you know, home based businesses, telecommuting, telehealth, all of the all of the things that, you know, what we're doing today um using Zoom meeting. Um it does not work in everyone's house. Um and it can be a challenge. Uh I'm finding that challenge here, but so we've, this group has been, you know, again, meeting for a few months. We've put together a handful of educational um kind of pieces um that were published in the Camden Herald and the Pen Bay Pilot. Um as a, you know, they did that pro bono for us, which was very nice. Um and I will say in Rockport, it's been, or in Camden, it's been Lehman Scott. Um remember, if you will, that broadband has been on the work plan of C D A C. Um so um Lehman Scott's been the the chair of C D A C has been in this task force. Steve Mattio from Camden National Bank, who's also on um C D A C. Um Mark Ratner has been sitting in on it. Um and as a select board chair or select board member and uh Robin McIntosh has been working on it as well um as a C D A C member. In Rockport in the past, Deb Hall, uh select board member, John and John Vinaman um is, was on it um from um the Herald. Um and then Bill Postitson from time to time. And so recently, last last Rockport Select Board Meeting, they made, they I think Deb was really kind of looking at how do we do this a little more formally? It's becoming an issue. Um you know, everyone is um having to um address broadband bandwidth, um speeds. Um and so we're looking at just options and so this was kind of to try to formalize that. Um and uh just to kind of keep this going, I know this, the Rockport Select Board approved that last last Tuesday or whenever they meet. Um and so that, they were just looking to um kind of formally create this task force and it's not a committee. Um and I'm sure we'll be continuing to work on goals and what have you. Um and I, for the most part, have been providing kind of staff support to it. Um but it's a very active the group. I don't know who everyone, you know, who's getting appointed from Rockport or who you guys uh are looking to would would appoint, but um it's been a very active group. Um and I think starting off to do some some really good things when it comes to um seeing what our options are. We're very unique. Um you know, we're not like rural Maine. Um the USDA or the feds or the state, no one's going to come into Camden or Rockport to try to do you know, big uh grant projects um to to bring broadband in. Um we just don't, you know, our income levels are too high, profitability is too high, so we have to look at other options and and uh we're just exploring that and that's what this task force is going to do and continue to do.
The three members that Rockport approved were Deborah Hall, Chair of the Select Board, John Vinaman and I've forgotten his name already, but he's the
Planning Board Chair.
Yeah, he's the Planning Board uh Chair.
Yep, yep.
So um they're looking, the the camp, Rockport is looking to Camden to join the task force and whatever force it wants to do, there are no numbers or limitations of people, but you know, if it's, there's no voting going on here, it's just a workforce to to, you know, try to attack our, you know, broadband issues, which I got a funny feeling they're really highlighted right now because of this work at home, you know, school at home for a lot of people having problems with that, but anyhow, that's the sub- that's the subject matter. Mark?
Uh I would say um I I've been attending the meetings. I'd like to be a part of the task force. Uh I've been saying for as long as I've been on the select board that probably my main priority is getting high fiber to everyone in town. You know, it's, I use it extensively in my business uh or internet. I wish I had fiber here. Um and as as Bob has mentioned, now people are finding out why it's so important. Because the world is changing and from what's happening now with the virus, the world may change considerably. And this may become even more important than it than it already is. I'm highly in favor of finding a way to get this done.
Allison?
Um I have one question. Well, first thing, what is the difference between a task force and a committee?
The only reason they chose, my understanding that was the only reason they chose the term task force was because committees don't usually have a select board as a member.
Okay, um. Um but then
Doesn't have to be.
I'm in favor, everybody's in favor of fast internet. Um I worry about it becoming too much of a like town government thing because there's not, just the level of expertise isn't quite there. Um we have, at the Opera House, it's a really perfect example. We have fiber there, lightning fast, every, there is nothing in the way of very fast internet, except our inability to implement it. Um and we we don't even have consistent Wi Fi in like public areas of, like in Audra's office or Bill Kelly's office. Um so just wanting to make sure that we're not wasting staff or town resources on an area that we might not have as much, you know, all that much expertise and Deb is very knowledgeable. Um it's something I I would love to follow, but I think we should be hesitant to um jump in today with making all of our appointments. Um but maybe we should reach out a little bit more to the community and see I don't know, just mull it over a little bit in terms of who we would want to put on there. I'm
Yeah, I I kind of agree with Allison. I I think uh and again, whether it's a task force or whatever the heck it is, it is no, absolutely no requirement that it has to be uh a select board member or not. I mean, I'm not suggesting we do or you don't, but I totally agree there should be expertise on here that knows can walk the walk and talk the talk about broadband. And that's, that's, I think that's really important. I believe one of the members of the um, well, two of them actually on on the Rockport side have have a lot of knowledge here. And we know Deborah does and I know John Vinaman does. I don't know the other gentleman very well, but I think that's really important. I totally agree. Otherwise it's a lot of um talk. I'm exaggerating, but that's, I would agree with Allison.
I mean, and I'm not, not to say I want to, I mean, Mark, I'm all in favor of Mark being a part of it. There's no, no need to ex- exclude anybody. I mean, I put Mark on, Mark, I think it's great that if you were able to follow that and you've been participate in everything. Um and I want to be, I want to be helpful. But um I think just try to reach out and see who is a real hot shot in this area that might be of help.
I think it's a great point, Allison.
Yeah, I do too. I mean, I know it's, I'm not throwing rocks at anybody, but I, myself included, I don't, I don't consider myself and anywhere near an expert as as some of you may be in this area. And it's, to me, it's like, you know, I focus on the energy and the building stuff and I I know that world and I can be more effective. I agree. Um maybe we can just do is to get uh to establish somebody to lead the the, our task force to decide what our task force is, but we gotta, we gotta find some industry experts to be a part of this. One, one or two.
Like maybe asking
I can work.
Local self reliance would be a helpful resource or part of this is just about, I mean, maybe even just threatening municipal broadband helps to put pressure on the you know, the internet service providers and you know, then we can negotiate something that's more favorable. It's all interconnected with the cable stuff too. Um we've been enthusiastic about trying to renegotiate those franchise agreements in the past. There's, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot to it.
Mark Retner?
Um I would like to ask that uh Jeremy consider being a part of it because in the meetings that we've had so far he's been an integral part of making sure that it stays organized, has a focus. And uh you know, with all the people there and has has been very beneficial in in making it as as workable as it is now. Um yeah, that'd be up to Audra and Jeremy, I guess, but I think he's been a great resource for for it so far.
I I frankly, I think it's an extension of C D A C um in a way. I mean, that's one of the priorities. Um I I feel like it's right up, you know, right up my alley for for this position, so um I I would um think I should be on that and I think honestly, you know, we we can continue to do our or whatever we're doing um while we're looking for that expert and I, Camden is very fortunate to have some pretty amazing um smart people um living here, so um I I think we'll be able to find a couple more smart, you know, people that are in this industry um and in this business and understand it. Um and then we can bring them to you for appointment to the task after that. I, that's how I would approach it.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, like I said, as long as we, uh as long as we reinforce it with the some, some portion of it, some core has knowledge of the industry, that's fine. Yeah, like I said, as long as we, uh, as long as we reinforce it with the, some, some portion of it, some core has knowledge of the industry, that's fine with me.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so bottom line is we're gonna, we can tell Rockport, we, we, we certainly are on board. We're just trying to wrestle with the, you know, the individuals.
Yep.
That's all they were looking for right now is just to get it rolling, um, and to. That's fine, all right.
Good, thank you.
Welcome to our last agenda, which is discussion, uh, about setting, uh, we have, I've had the opportunity to discuss, I believe, with each of you. This, um, some feedback that Bill had given us, um, through Audra on, uh, the election. And specifically, you know, going forward with the election on June 9th and some, but some of the dates, um, are a bit restrictive. And we do need to look at setting special select board meetings for at least the FY21 budget and the town meeting warrant, warrants. Um, that we, uh, and plus the ordinance warrants, which we haven't approved yet either. Um, for the, I think it's four ordinances, but that's, that's this agenda item. Uh, Audra, why don't you lead us into schedule?
Well, I guess, um, you know, this sort of comes down to the discussion around, you know, what do we do with town meeting? What do we do with elections? What do we do with the budget approval process? And, you know, really we're kind of faced with, we, we've got, we've just have to pick what is the best of a bunch of bad options? Um, because we really don't have a lot of good ones, uh, given kind of like, you know, our, our form of government, the current situation we're in. And, you know, what, and sort of all of the uncertainty around what's going to happen in the coming month or, you know, six weeks. So, um, you know, Bill has also talked through this issue with his colleagues, like a, a lot of municipal attorneys are wrestling with, you know, other communities and, and how, you know, they advise their municipalities and what they should be doing. And through, you know, discussing this with Bill, really sort of the best approach that we could see is moving forward with, um, you know, June Town Meeting Part One, which is the ballot voting and putting all the items that are typically on open floor town meeting on the June ballot. Um, there's a lot of sort of logistical things that need to be worked out with that. Um, I would recommend that, you know, we encourage as much absentee ballot or absentee voting as possible. So making it very easy for people to vote absentee by automatically sending everybody out a ballot. Um, there are other things that we're probably going to need to organize around, you know, opening a polling location and, um, encouraging social distancing through that. Um, but, you know, it is, it is doable and it seems like it's the, you know, best option out of a bunch of bad ones. Um, so before we go into any more detail about any of this, do any of you have any questions or concerns about this approach to town meeting budget elections?
Hillary, hand your hand up.
Um, yeah, just a, a question, um, for Audra or Bill, I guess. Um, in the discussions with the other municipal association attorneys, um, or anyone I guess. I'm just curious if the governor's administration has weighed in at all on this question. I mean, it has to have come up for a number of municipalities, I would think.
I was just getting off mute. Um, so yes, um, it has, um, people have tried all kinds of things. Uh, today, one town suggested that to be drive by, um, town meeting where you get, uh, checked in at the, at the kiosk and then somehow went a large field and somehow get heard with motions and everything else. Um, the long and short of it is that the, um, the floor vote, um, mechanism with the governor's current 10 day prohibition of more than 10 folks being in one place, uh, does apply to town meeting. It wasn't exactly clear in the executive orders, but, um, attorneys at MMA have asked for clarification about that. Uh, because some towns have tried to have, just literally have their town meeting outside.
They've asked for clarification from the administration?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, so that's, that's a hard one, uh, to know when that, for example, is going to be lifted. Right now it goes through May 15th. And of course we have the chicken and egg problem of trying to figure out when to sign up absentee ballots, um, and send them out well before meeting and not knowing if the town meeting can actually take place in a floor vote, because that easily could be extended. Um, and, you know, I think we're all mindful of the fact that the governor has extended, uh, the primary, uh, voting until, uh, June 14th at present.
July.
July.
July, right?
I'm sorry, I meant July, yes. Apparently you've all seen that, yes, thanks, anyway.
Yeah, July 14th.
Yes, 14th, sorry. And, and there's, long and short of the give and take discussion with other municipal attorneys was, uh, there's no perfect way to skin this cat and, uh, everything is a compromise at this point.
Other questions for Bill? Mark, you, you have, I didn't see any other hands. Allison.
So much of a question as, um, you know, of course there are any number of, of concerns with it. We're sort of taking away the normal public process where you can dissect the budget and not just vote it up or down. Um, you can choose between multiple options. You've got the department head recommendation and the budget committee and the select board. And that's, um, you know, then they, people can make motions to amend things. We like to sometimes say, okay, well, if we didn't get this quite right, we can fix it at town meeting. So we'd be taking away, um, that aspect of it. But if, you know, if anything good can come of this time period, it's forcing us, I think, to, to try some new things and to see what people like and what people don't. I've had a few people say that they like the select word meetings more like this than they do the other. Not the people participating in them necessarily, but the people watching, um, there. The, one of the major complaints we get about town government is that we're, it's just so stuck in the mud and people want things to change. And, um, there's never, there's never going to be a better chance to try something new. And so the, the opportunity to give everybody a ballot and, you know, send it to them and let them mull it over. They could have the, you know, we can send the budget committee recommendations right along with it in the, you know, the same way. And then they can have time to mull it over and discuss and ask questions and then send it in. And, you know, there are a few people that'll be able to vote on the budget when they never been, you know, they haven't been able to do it for years because their, um, you know, their health doesn't allow them to, to leave. So to me, it's kind of, it, it's kind of exciting. Um, just to, maybe it'll be a disaster and we'll, and we'll learn a bunch. Um, probably there will be problems, but at least, I don't know. I think it's a really exciting opportunity to, to see how it goes when we try something different.
That's a great comment. Uh, but, um, Bill and then I'll go to Mark, one second. Bill?
Just to, I think I'm on, yes, just a quick, uh, comment, just to follow up with Allison's point, in case I forget when, between now and when the, everything's being printed up. But Audra and Janice, um, and everybody else, um, the, there is a requirement by statute with the ballot, secret ballot mechanism that both the budget committee and the select board's recommendations be printed. Just like we do in the town warrant, the floor votes. So those will have to be on the secret ballot, Allison.
Well.
People hear one or the other, right?
We have to provide, so are you saying that we would, people would vote, would choose between different?
No, 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 I'm just saying that the recommend, you know how we usually see budget committee recommend whatever the vote might be? And we see select board recommends whatever the vote might be. Those, those will just have to be on the ballot, that's all. It's just information, there's not a choice. It's either yes or no on the budget, on the secret ballot.
So which, which version of the ballot, would they be voting yes or no to?
On the select board. But they will get to see if there's like a difference between what the select board approved versus what the budget committee.
Which would, which should foster more questions, I would hope. If people like to Allison's point, I would hope, I mean, the, the exciting part to me is I, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I'd love, I'd love to see some energy created with emails to us while they're holding these ballots and saying, why is there a difference between what I'm voting on and what the budget committee recommended? As I hear, the budget committee, uh, recommendations are not what they're voting on. It's the total of the select board approved, is that correct, Bill?
There's going to be one, however it's worded, there'll be one budget presented.
Okay.
And it's a yes or no on that. Um, on your point, Bob, though, just be a little careful, uh, when people are, are voting. Um, I would be very cautious about encouraging them to communicate with elected officials about how they should vote or what it means.
No.
When they get an absentee ballot, they're on their own.
I get that. Well, but they have a question on what's included in the number. We can provide factual information to anybody.
Uh, yes, that would, that is true. I just want to be careful about, um, somebody gets in a ballot and then they're asking in a roundabout way, uh, one or more of you about how either they should vote or what it means, what it means to you.
Now, my, my point was if a person said, why, Bob, why is there, what, what, what's the representative difference between the budget committee on this line item and, and the select board? And I would say, well, that's because they wanted to, uh, not buy a truck. That's it. That, that's information that should be available.
It's assuming that they read the supplementary materials. Our charter requires that we send out the, the budget committee recommendations.
Right.
But for Taylor has had a.
Actually, I keep thinking you have more questions as we're talking, so the list is growing. One second, Taylor, Mark has hand up three times, so.
Yes, he did.
I, I, I was going to say, uh, number one, from what Bill just said, I'm in big trouble because my wife is definitely going to ask me what to vote for. But I can't help, I can't help that. Um, uh, I think it's, I, I, I think this is a good idea. I think we should do it. Uh, the one thing that excites me is more people will be able to vote on the budget than have probably ever, by a large number than have ever voted on it before. Um, because of the, you know, the most we've ever had on town meeting is, you know, a little over 500. And when we've really crammed the, uh, the Opera House and we'll have a substantial number of people getting a chance to vote. Give us a better opportunity to see how the town feels about the budget that, that we, we were. So I think it's a good idea and we'll, we'll find out, you know, like Allison said, this is more experimentation. Um, you know, this is, it's all new rules and, you know, we should, we should, uh, and, and, you know, invite them in and, and not be so scared to try new things.
I agree. Taylor, now it's Taylor's turn.
Um, yeah, a couple, uh, thoughts, but, um, on the absentee thing, though, really just out of curiosity and not to, not to belabor your point. Um, with absentee ballots as they stand now for other types of elections, what's to prevent somebody from contacting an elected official and asking their opinion?
Nothing that I know of, I just would, um.
Just don't ask.
It, we're choosing a process that requires something.
I'm just questioning, I guess I'm just questioning what.
Taylor's on to something that we're going to.
I'm questioning what, what the, what the, what the negative, like what's the negativity?
To, well, uh, I put it this way, we have, there's an assumption that the voter between, for example, there might be a manager's report this year that's a little more detailed, or there might be information on the website that's more detailed because of this. And it's a central, um, repository of information and therefore everyone's getting the same information. Similarly, if we were doing the floor vote, and this is why annual town meeting is, is, you know, so sacred. The floor vote is in front of everyone who wishes to attend based on a legal notice to debate the issues and hear the facts in one location so that they all hear the same thing. So I understand everybody wants to be helpful and, uh, I suspect you will get questions. I can only try to, um, underscore that, um, an election, um, that there ought to be a single repository of, of information that a voter can look to. And I think that should be through Audra's town office.
So is it more about, sorry, is it more about the fact that this, this specifically this type of process that we're changing to an absentee ballot, uh, process is meant for town meeting?
No, I think it's just that we're, in my mind, I, the idea is that, um, there isn't a process in which voters are seeking information from multiple sources that may be more opinion driven than factually driven. Obviously, anybody who gets an absentee ballot can do that. Uh, I just wouldn't want there to be, uh, an allegation later on.
Yeah.
That Taylor said X or Y, and that's why I voted that way, and I didn't know that. I think what might feel awkward about this is there's a bit of a flipping of the burden to expect people to be informed and to read what's on the website and to be up to speed on what's available before they vote. But not to independently come after each of you five and ask additional questions. If somebody does that, as we've discussed before, I would suggest you refer them to the website and Audra. And there could be almost like a question and answer thing where it's available for the whole town.
Okay, so that's a great segue. I didn't mean to be a pain in the butt. Um, um, so I, I do, this is going to be super unique and, and hopefully positive and interesting. But it did remind me of, you know, I think that the people that regularly attend town meeting are not going to be happy about it. Um, but I was reminded, uh, in thinking about this, of an article from 1984 that Allison showed me a few months ago that Ken Bailey wrote in the newspaper. That was complaining about how only 40 people regularly show up to town meeting. So apparently since 1984 and, and before then, nothing has changed. Um, um, I say that to say, I think it will be interesting in that we're essentially forcing everybody to participate in the, in what is normally the town meeting part of the secret ballot. So potentially it's interesting.
Right, well, I think a good point you're all running around to is, uh, I'd like to think we have some creative ways of providing information on the website or wherever, where people can go. And like you said, maybe a Q and A, or maybe it's just, just general information. Well, for example, um, this budget represents this increase or decrease over the last year, a little bit, little, all kinds of tidbits that people may be interested in that would be good to put on, you know, the factual stuff, you know, it's really what it is. Um, because there are people who are interested in that kind of information to make their decisions. Um, especially in this fear now of the financial situation. But what it sounds like, and what I'm hearing across the board is, uh, like we're just before from your, each of you is a trepidation. But, you know, it may be an interesting experiment. I, I have to agree. I, I, I think it's an opportunity to do something different and, and, and maybe engage more people. Uh, maybe I'm naive, but I think we can, I hope we do. Um, but if, if that's, Allison, did you hand up again?
Well, I guess also I'm wondering about the school and.
Oh, yeah.
They hold their own, do they get to make this decision independently? Because they technically told, I mean, they have their own ballot. Um, we need to, I mean, this to me was like a, a, a general briefing, let's, let's mull it over kind of thing, not a, we're definitely deciding today to do this.
No, I definitely need you to decide today because.
Oh, we have a schedule.
There's going to be a bunch of, this is, this is kind of like, if we're going to do this, we got to commit to this. And there's some things that I need you to all do very quickly.
Yeah.
But we can make this happen.
I said was, um, on the agenda was discussion.
It was approval of setting, well, the, setting the budget and the warrant is all given by the schedule of the election. And because the budget in particular was going to be, uh, it typically is in the town report. That schedule was different than putting it on a ballot because the ballot has to be printed and it has a printing time backing up, uh, then a 30x days of, you know, the stat, statute, correct me if I'm wrong, but for the, uh, we have to have the ballots ready for absentee ballot. Long story short is we kind of got to improve everything by the end of this week.
Hold on, where on our agenda does it say that we're voting, supposed to be voting on something tonight about setting a?
Well, okay, so it says set special select board meetings. So the approval of the budget and the approval of the town meeting warrant. I'm going to need you, if you decide that you want to go with a secret ballot for everything, and that's how we're doing town meeting this year. I need you to set those, those meetings for this week so that you can approve those things this week. So we can get everything on the ballot in time to send out absentee ballots.
That's, that's different than saying that we have to vote to do it right now. You just want us to vote to, you just want us to set the meeting so that.
What I'm saying is if you decide you want to go in this direction, that's going to dictate when you set those meetings for. Because if you don't have them this week, that, then we won't have enough time to do it.
When is the budget, hold on, the budget committee?
Thursday.
Thursday.
So it would have to be Friday. So it would have to be Friday, but actually, but real quick, could I get a question, an answer to the school question?
Yeah.
Yes, the school has already decided that they are gonna move ahead with, um. Putting their, uh, you know, uh, budget approval on the July ballot.
Okay. Yeah, tricky.
They've got.
Pretty. Well, you may remember too, as, as this moment, no, nothing has changed on the election day. It's still, we haven't changed anything. It's June ninth per charter. So we're not changing the date, we're just changing what's on the ballot. On that secret ballot. And we're, and we're, may, yes, we're not gonna have a open town meeting the. After, within seven days of June ninth. So you, you're right about, um, no, uh, but to me, we're not changing anything. We've, we've said to the Budget Committee, we've said to the ordinance development, to Jeremy, we, we are getting this all done. Assuming a June ninth ballot, and we haven't changed that.
Well, we are, no, we are changing. The last select board meeting. I, I tried to say, let's go right ahead and have our select, uh, me, a, a select board meeting about the budget and let's keep going. And everybody, well, and there was a lot of discussion about how we were really in no hurry. And we had all the time in the world and. Now it looks, it feels, because it was, and, and all my conversations with, haven't been that many, but with Katrina. Um, she had said, well, you know, she certainly hoped we would assume that we would go along with what, you know, the state was gonna do and. I, I just sort of assumed that's what we would do too. I, as I said, I'm excited about this opportunity, but, um. If, if the result is that we're really rushing our select board. Recommendation, it's, it's more important than ever that the select board recommendation on the budget be the best that it can be. So what is the, what, like the annual report, we haven't written the, the select board. Summary that, you know, the select word contribution to the annual report, there are all these things, what, how, how rushed? Are we if we go this?
Annual report's totally different from this.
Annual report has to be available seven days before.
Three days.
How many?
Three. Three business days.
Oh, John always says it was more.
Three. Technically it's three, but we try to have them available at least two weeks.
Yeah, sure. Taylor?
But. Um, yeah, I, I. You know, I, I guess I share Allison's concern in that we, and I think I understand it more now, but. You know, at the last meeting, we were definitely having that discussion and my interpretation, feeling of things that we will, that, you know, that we had more flexibility. Um, particularly because of the way that the legislature had, had given us in, in extending our current budget should we need to. And with the primaries being moved, I felt like that we would have the opportunity to do that. And what I'm hearing from and reading from Bill's. Letter and Audra's attached memo is that the thing handicapping us is that our town charter. Basically does not give us the ability to have that flexibility in moving. We, we don't have the flexibility because our charter to move our secret ballot date to July fourteenth, is that correct?
Oh, well, yeah, no, uh, I, um, when I wrote that, I had just come out of a, um, seminar with a bunch of municipal attorneys. And I thought I understood, oh, I did understand the discussion, but I went back and looked at the statute that was passed on March seventeenth. And it does give precedent over the charter to set the date.
Okay, that's what I thought initially.
Well, it's there, but I still think it's a, it's a crapshoot in terms of trying to figure out when town meeting date. Should be with the uncertainty of whether or not more than ten people are gonna be able to gather in one room.
Right, certainly July is a much better, I mean, I would rather just get this done, don't get me wrong. But for the sake of having a discussion, because I think Allison's correct, I really am uncomfortable with the idea of rushing a budget, particularly now. Um, but I think just practically speaking, the idea that a month later in July, when we're having primaries. Certainly you have to admit that it's a much more realistic to assume that people would be able to gather in July than they would in June.
Yeah, some of, um, well, I, I guess the question I would keep asking myself is what am I gonna know more today than I? What might know in a month about the budget, and I don't think it's gonna be much. Um, I don't necessarily, I do not believe that, uh, yeah, we could, we can negotiate this budget for weeks if we wanted to. Yeah, to your point, Allison, I, I agree, we discussed actually doing a workshop ASAP from setting it tonight. Um, uh, for a workshop to be immediately followed by a select board meeting to approve it. And that, in my mind, was gonna happen X days after tonight because we were trying to get it done. Um, so, you know, I, I guess I, I get your point, but I, I still, still think we have a. A great opportunity to do something here and we shouldn't let, uh, no matter when we have a budget meeting, we're gonna have one. You're right, and, and I don't, I helped, uh, help me here, but what are we gonna know more in a couple of weeks than we don't know now?
So just for the sake of clarity, uh, since we're talking about logistics more than anything. If we stick with the June ninth secret ballot date. We need to have, I'm just reading this through the transcript, the ballots must be printed and mailed by Friday night, so. The select board must have their final version of the budget approved by May first. So that gives us until May first basically to have that meeting for us to decide.
No, because we've got to get the ballots ready to go to the printer and that needs to be done by Friday.
The eighth.
Yeah, and we talked about, you know, all kinds of others, like.
Friday, Friday fourth.
Okay.
When, so we would have to, we would be setting a, a special select board meeting for Friday so that we could approve the whole ballot?
Yes.
Well.
The budget as well as the, the ballot, yes.
The warrants.
After, after the Thursday budget committee meeting, I have to think if I can even do it on Friday.
Well, that's a good point, Allison, I get that, but.
Yeah.
I, I, we would talk, we could, we have, all kinds of schedules, yours included, of course, and Taylor's and. Everybody's remarks, uh, that is an issue. We can probably, we, we weasel around a day or so, honestly. Bill, you yourself, if we miss the thirty day thing by one day, I, I, that's, I'm sorry, we're in a special circle with us right now. And, and, and we're doing, uh, and as I hear it, we're doing a, a ballot, uh, virtually a hundred percent, ninety-five percent. By absentee. So, you know, I, I, yeah, I know it's a tight, tight schedule and it, it, it does feel rushed to me too. But I don't know, from my perspective, I don't think I'll know anything more about the budget. And a week from now than I will, um, by the, uh, after tomorrow, after, after, uh, Thursday night. Which they have to finish, the Budget Committee has to finish Thursday night.
Bill, do you have a sense of, um. Since you went back and looking, it seems like maybe your, your initial interpretation has changed a bit. Do you have a sense of what the other attorneys are saying to their municipalities? But are, are there other select board forms of government that are probably going to move their town meeting dates in line with the July fourteenth primaries?
Um.
Uh, yeah.
People are all over the place in terms of what they're doing. I actually was just looking at the language again, um, in terms of what the special. Notice said, and it's, you know, it's subject to a little bit of interpretation. It, it talks about, um. Both the budget. So the answer to your question is, um, they're all over the place trying to wrestle with it, frankly.
Yeah.
Because a lot of towns don't have secret ballots, they just do floor votes. Um, and then there's every combination sort of therein where some towns have a larger secret ballot than Camden traditionally does. Um, but this, the reason this is becoming sort of an issue of discussion is. There is a provision in the statute on secret ballots that authorizes you five to quote, order. Any warrant article to be placed on the secret ballot, and that's essentially what was, um, discussed in this, uh, seminar I was attending. As a mechanism for people, for towns to try to find a way through and, and, and not violate the, the ten person limit. In terms of attending a town meeting. We don't know when that will end.
So I guess my only, this is just for everybody, I mean, my, I don't have a problem, it, it, it does feel rushed. And I agree with, with Bob that, you know, I don't think I'm gonna know any more about the budget. Two weeks or three weeks from now than I would know today or tomorrow. Basically, after the Budget Committee finishes things on Thursday, I just don't, there's not really gonna be any more information to be gleaned. That's like, that being said, the re, the only reason I'd be okay with rushing things, so to speak, and trying to make this happen and changing the way that we've always done. Our voting and town meeting is because we're being forced to do so. Because the charter doesn't give us any options. That was the reason I was okay with it, but it, what I'm hearing is that the charter. Can be set aside essentially, given the current situation. I really wonder why we need to do that and if it does make more sense to, to keep things the way they are if we're allowed to do so and have this in July.
Well, let me just add.
Am I missing, am I missing anything?
One more thing about the complication of this, because the statute, the emergency statute, and again, lots of gray areas. The emergency statute talks about the secret ballot being delayed, contrary to charter. It doesn't actually talk about the floor, the mo, the floor vote being delayed. Now, we can link those things up and say, the charter says, secret ballot shall be on the second week in June. And the floor vote is within seven days. Therefore, since the emergency statute said that the secret ballot can be delayed, they must have meant that we could also delay the floor vote. Well, it doesn't actually say that, so, uh, the, the absolute certainty that I'd like to give you on one way or the other is not there.
That's understandable.
Mark?
I'm, you know, as, as Taylor just said, you know, I've sat through the budget meetings, you know, we'll sit through Thursday night, whoever can. Um, gone through it, you know, line by line by line, I pretty much know everything is there. Nothing much is going to change. Um, you know, the world may change and we may have to do some things after the fact. Of the budget, but if we get this done, um, then we might have to deal with, with changing things, you know. Once we find out where we are, what the world is gonna change. If we keep delaying, if we delay things, it may make it more complicated.
Yeah.
Instead of less complicated.
Um, one other factor, um, one second, Allison, I wanna ask Jody a question. Jody, um, if we in fact improve a budget on, assuming it's voted on with June ninth and, and the affirmative. Does that make the job, versus the town having to extend the existing budget for say a couple of months? Um, isn't that a more direct route, it's more normal, it's what we always do? Operationally, isn't that more simpler, more, uh, the simplest way to approach it also from, from your perspective?
I was, I was having this discussion with Audra today and Katrina, I don't know what the procedure would be if we were to extend. Beyond June thirtieth, it might be simple, um, but honestly, I, I've never had to deal with that.
Yeah.
And can I be frank about Trio Art System? Uh, just handling the normal, regular, um, you know, sort of day to day can be unbelievably, um. Cumbersome. So expecting our software system, our financial, you know, record keeping system to be able to allow us to. Um, you know, carry forward the FY twenty budget into FY twenty-one and then midstream change to an FY twenty-one budget? I mean, I've talked with other town managers across the state about this and everyone's kind of. Dressing out and pulling their hair out over it because I just don't think that there is gonna be a clean or easy way to do that. But I mean, that's not any of your concern because.
Well, it is because.
Like this is all back office stuff, but frankly.
It is a concern, it's very complicated. From a business perspective, doing that is extremely time consuming, expensive, to the point where we had to bring in extra staff. Just to make the modifications to the accounts.
Right, but I, I mean, also from the other side of it, from the other operational side of it, if we do go forward with, um. You know, voting, the ballot voting in June, or sorry, secret ballot voting in June, it really is gonna be sort of all hands on deck around. Um, you know, this election, so it's going to be, you know, not just Katrina's time, but really all of us that work out, so, you know, in the front office. Kind of, um, helping out with that because it is quite a process to do that many absentee ballots. Anyway, I just wanna, I just wanna give you both sides of it, so.
There's all kinds of sides here. I, every one of your points is great, but what I'm, what I'm thinking is. You know, to all the points you've made about this is a, we, we, you know, we've done the first virtual meeting of town and we've done the first and first and first. And this first could be, as we've all, you've all said, this is an exciting thing. If we proceed with the idea that we'll try to accomplish this and we hit a snag, we can always go to plan B. If we try to approve budget warrants as Audra has requested, um. I strongly believe that's a not as big a task as we think it is at this point. Unless we make it such, and if we make it such, then maybe we can't get it done, and then maybe we have to go to, to make another, uh, idea. Uh, Taylor has here the first, Allison.
Um, just a couple of things, um, the, my concern really isn't the, the, the. The putting the budget together itself, like, you know, I, I think that every, from what I've heard, everyone agrees that like. Not much is gonna change between this week and two weeks from now. Um, my concern is more about how we're affecting the, the, the process of the elections and how people are gonna perceive that. Um, you know, if, if we have the opportunity to have it more in line with the way we've done it in July, and that's gonna make it easier for people. And people can still go to the polls. I just wanna make sure that we're changing things, changing the regular process for a really good reason. Um, so if it's just as easy for us to have things done the way they always have been, and just even in July. I guess that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Um, and then my question is typically, uh, when we have the budget voted on at the town, at the floor of the town meeting, people have a choice. They, you know, they either vote up or down the select board budget or vote up or down the budget committee budget. But on secret ballot, it's gonna be yes or no on the budget. So what happens if no wins? Just curious.
Uh, you gotta go back to the well.
Probably just like if you vote on the school budget, but I don't know if there's an actual process outlined for that where.
It's probably what happened, but it's certainly possible.
It is.
I don't know with the school once in a while.
Yeah, it, it is. I, I've actually heard of it happened, a school budget in the West Coast was rejected by a town. And they had to go back and reconstitute the budget and vote it again.
Oh, I've.
What'd you say, Audrey?
It happens all the time in Maine. I, like, look, look at the town of Scarborough, they always vote down the school budget. I mean, you know, it's just part of the course, and I think if it happened to us, then we would just have to. I mean, that's when we would probably say, okay, well, you know, it's August or whatever, September, we can do open floor town meetings, so we'll just.
Yeah, yeah. Allison, your hand up.
Don't we have to hold a public hearing for the? Uh, town warrant approval?
Well, to my.
It's an agenda item.
Agenda item. We, we've already approved the ordinance going to the vote. We're only approving the, the warrant language that'll be on the ballot. We always approve that as a select board meeting. Mark?
Um. The, the one thing that, you know, we're talking about here is that July is gonna be a change. And everything that I see is that things may not happen in July. And, you know, that to look at that as go, well, then we'll be able to do this and do that. I, I don't think that's so clear cut at this point. And if we keep postponing it because we think we're gonna be able to do that, then we're really doing even more damage. Um, I'm certainly in favor of, of moving forward now, having obviously a budget meeting on Thursday, having a special meeting Friday. Um, if people can work their way out to it and getting this done and having this election. Things may change again, you know, what they're saying now is if people in a lot of, a lot of states are going back trying to open. And they say if it happens early, we will have a worse incidence of the virus come September, October. This is not gonna go away. This is until there is a vaccine and a cure. Medicine, this is not gonna go away. And to, to, to try and push it down the road. I just, I just don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Know what we know and we should work on it.
I object to the way that so, I, the. The agenda didn't indicate we're being asked to make a decision tonight and I would have, I. I would have taken the time to try to reach out to the, to the school board. I'd really like to know about their reasoning for, for. Delaying it, um, and just, I mean, the, the reason is because they're gonna go along with what the state's doing. And that, I think that's less confusing to people when you're just.
Exactly.
It's, you know, it's you're voting on the select board and school board and all of those things at the same time as. These other state things, and that's a much easier message for people. It's, I'm trying to think how I'm. Going to explain that everything else is like the state's doing, but that all the town of Camden stuff is. This other way. I I love the idea of trying to do things differently. I just. Don't want to try to do things differently just for the sake of trying to prove that we can, or. I don't also, I'm wondering how much it's going to cost us is what. What, because it sounds like we'll still have to run, we'll still have the cost of the election in July. Because we have to do that one, but then the additional cost of. Doing all of these mailings, and do we have an estimate on how much that will cost?
Audrey, what about FEMA?
Yeah, it's about, it's going to be about $6,000, but any sort of cost that we've incurred as a result of. The pandemic, it's all, it's reimbursable by FEMA, so this would be. Similar to, you know, any other cost that's. Because of the fact that we've had to adjust the way that we do things.
Yeah, all the all these are great.
Until July is that we will even, yes, it's possible that it, things won't be different in July. It won't be possible to hold town meetings. It won't. But we will be in the same situation as everyone else, so. I'm not worried, like, the state will come up with a process if they can't hold their normal. Election and we'll just be able to follow that.
That's, I I kind of, I think Allison did a much more eloquent job of explaining where I was concerned.
I I don't think we're going to be the only one. Bill. To tell you your question, are there towns looking at maintaining the June elections, to your knowledge?
Oh, yeah, some towns have had town meeting in March and April.
Okay.
So I'm making it up as they go along.
Sorry?
Is anyone else doing it all by mail, this kind of a?
The secret ballot. All I can tell you is that it was a topic of discussion among municipal attorneys and looking at avenues, and this is, this is one that's. As you say, it's novel. We don't usually use it, but it's there. It was part of the discussion. I can't tell you how many are going to do it, but it was part of the discussion.
Yeah, and and of course, the secret ballot mailing thing is is also an option. There probably was, we, somebody discussed social distancing and 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 in the polls is an option also. I. Just thought the mailing thing, my perspective was easier, but Taylor.
Um, yeah, I totally understand that this is like, this is uncharted territory for everybody.
Yeah.
Um, and so I don't expect there to be a clear cut answer. But I do think that this is a pretty big deal, so I really want to make sure that that I understand at least the pros and cons of each decision. So. If we. If, Bill, from what you're saying is, if there is a legal way for us to tie us together with the state and. Move our election, our secret ballot elections, which have. Historically been on the same day that you would vote in the primary election in this state and to stay in line with the state, as Allison was suggesting. I'm 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 wondering if anybody, particularly, I guess, in the town office, Audrey, is there any, what is the negative effect that we would have by continuing to operate on our. Current budget? Obviously, the system you've described is horrendous. What else might there be that that really would make us say it's just much better if we get this done in June?
Yeah, I mean, for us, it's really just a logistical challenge with our software system. And that's, I mean, that's like the biggest sort of negative from an operational standpoint.
On the flip side of it, though, it sounds like we have staff will have to crunch to make things work for June as well, so, you know.
Yes, yeah, so there, I mean, you know, that's the finance office. It's it's bad for them, but for the clerk, July would be better.
To get budget committee input. On this or a little bit more public. Input in general, since we've gone through this whole process of telling the budget committee that, you know, this is how it works. I'm, I don't want anybody to feel like we're pulling the rug out from. Under them and. I mean, I guess we could conceptually agree to this. Now, and if we, if, you know, we get a lot of.
Feedback.
Feedback from the committee that makes us say, oof. Then there's still the chance to pull.
Yeah.
Like on it, or may, you know, who knows, maybe they'll say.
But, well, it, yeah, and end of the day, at some point. Audrey, do you want to say something?
Well, I would also suggest that, okay, so even say. All of you decide June, it's just not going to work. You know, too short a notice and time, you know, we want to, whatever it is you want to do to feel more comfortable about that decision, so you want to do it in July. I would suggest that in July, having an open floor town meeting, even if it's something that's possible to do by July, and I know that we're all pretty skeptical as to whether or not. That's going to be possible.
Say, would or would not?
Everyone is like, you know, July in Maine, everybody is sort of finally able to sort of get out theoretically, if we're able to do it, get out in public again. How many people do you think are actually going to show up at an open floor town meeting? So is it even? Even if it were feasible to have one, would it be like a good? Democratic process to schedule one? So maybe if you're thinking about doing this in July, you would still want to do it all by secret ballot.
Yeah, it's very possible.
All over Zoom. I don't understand why we can't advocate for that. I mean, we could find a way of people registering. Everybody could participate in a big webinar and. I don't see how it's any different than than holding city council meetings over Zoom, so.
Well, again, to your point and I point, Allison, if we, that's, you know, those are things we could, sorry, try to put the flesh on the bone, but if we, if we approve the budget. On this, on the schedule we're talking about, we could always make those decisions going or or not going forward. I mean. It to me, I just don't, I get this, I see, I hear a reluctance about. Approving a budget this Friday, what's the difference if we approve it next Friday? I I don't, I don't get it. I just don't see it.
I don't have time. I'm not prepared to do anything select word related on Friday. Friday is the day I pick up medical supplies for all of our Syria. Operations. It's a really important.
Okay, well.
Time for that. I'm trying to.
All right, but but it's, when it's Friday or Monday, let's work on the schedule. Let's just work on.
I don't have to be Friday, though.
Okay, I get, got it. And Taylor's got a schedule. He's available Monday, you know, blah, blah, blah. Well, we can work on what day, plus or minus one. I don't care what anybody says, but I don't see what what harm that can happen for us to proceed on this basis. And see if we hit a snag for any reason, you know, you know, a three thousand people protesting in front of town. Oh, I don't know, I'm just exaggerating, but. I I think we have an opportunity to do something different. We should. I think it's a good opportunity. Our attorney is 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 recommending this. We have a good reason. We have a number of reasons to tell people. I I don't see anybody. Coming at me with the people I know and saying this is stupid, not in this environment, they won't. But that's, that's just me, but I think we.
We're going to rush it as a town, and it's going to be sloppy in its execution and. There's no reason that we can't, we doesn't have to be June ninth, that the the emergency order, whatever it's called, says that we can delay. Our town meeting, so we we could make it.
No.
You're shaking inside June nineteenth.
No.
Why not?
Well, again, the the part of the confusion. In March and April, in discussions with MMA about continuing quote town meeting. Their approach was that you had to actually open up the town meeting. And take a vote to continue it to a date certain because the. The legislation that was passed on March seventeenth only addresses the secret ballot and not. The floor vote issue, so we're in a bit of a gray area. And that doesn't help us, but that's, that's the way it is. Our charter calls for two, two different animals, both secret ballot and floor vote.
Common sense has got to dictate. Like, me, common sense says.
One at a time, people. Taylor?
I mean, if it's a gray area, Bill, to me, common sense says that the legislature intended to move the secret ballot day. The same reason that they would move the secret ballot day, they would move town meetings. It's just like, that's the only thing that lines up in my mind.
I don't disagree. The overlay I've been thinking about frankly is the fact that we're not supposed to have more than ten people present, and we don't know when that's going to end. And the secret ballot voting is at least a mechanism. Between absentee ballots and then carefully trying to get folks in perhaps alphabetically, however. To vote on secret ballot day, then you can at least not violate the the no more than ten person rule. So I have no perfect solutions. It's just looking at the whole pot, and I think your discussion is fine. I don't have any perfect solutions.
Yeah, it it's it's what they, it's what they pay us for, right? To make a decision like this, and again. I, if we scheduled for whatever day Allison, Taylor, Martin, Mike, and Jenna and I can make it, and then in the next days. To to do, to do this function, I just don't see what the big deal is.
Can we, so I'm okay with scheduling, scheduling it tonight just to schedule it. That gives us a couple of days to let this marinate as well, and I would like to try to like. Bill, I really do appreciate you, and I know you have an incredibly difficult job to do in this situation. I'm not asking you for the answer. But maybe there can be some clarification from Maine Municipal in the next couple of days, like.
Sure.
Kind of hard to believe that there's not somebody that has an answer on what was intended.
Can I say, I don't think seeking any clarification is going to help at all. You just need to pick a path and go down it.
Well, you can't vastly, I mean, we can if we reped it a stone wall and then take a chance, but. Yeah, yeah, this is about decision making, and it's a, except we also has an opportunity here. I'm not sure what the growing trepidation is coming from, except for maybe some questions about what the agenda should and shouldn't say. But we've never stopped, we've never stopped the process to prepare for June ninth secret ballot, never.
Um, our discuss, stop saying that because our discussion last. Two weeks ago absolutely implied that that's, that's completely what we were going to do.
I disagree.
This came up at the, at the last minute, this new proposal. And I, I love the proposal in a lot of ways. But if it's like what we're trying to avoid, it needs to be able, it needs to make sense. We're doing, we're doing this to avoid this or to accomplish this, and. What our charter doesn't let us do, or if we're going to say we're trying to avoid this gray area because we're worried somebody might sue us later. Uh, you know, we're, we're, we're basically choosing risks anywhere.
You're right.
So we can choose between them. If I don't like the idea of being told it's Friday or we all die. I agree with what you're saying, Bob, that that if there's a way to to change up this process as much as we're suggesting, there's also a way. To to make it five days later. It letting people mail in their their ballots by June fourteenth or whatever, or I don't. As you would say, who's going to sue us? And if there's a greater.
Sure.
Good. I, if I get, I'm advocating for Taylor. I mean, Taylor, what Taylor's. I don't think we're going to get any.
I thought I was advocating for you.
Taylor isn't going to tell us what to do. I.
I mean, yeah, my, just to be, to be clear again, like, my issue isn't about the budget process. You know, it got set back and it does feel rushed, but I think we can get over that. That's an easy hurdle to get over. Because I don't see that much that will change over the next weeks. My big issue is us. Having a different schedule than the state primaries and not having a greater reason for it. If we have the ability to stay in line with what the state is doing.
And now the school, that it concerns me.
Right, yeah, that's, that's true. Thank you.
Talking to them earlier.
Yes. Yes, Bill. To quote, Taylor just said, we don't have a good reason. Is that correct?
Well, I think what the, one of the difficulties is we're trying to read tea leaves, and I think that there is, as Audrey has said, there's sort of this practical. Side of things that is part of the equation of how, what happens if you run sixty eight, seventy two days. Using last year's budget and how that does or doesn't work. It sounds like a nightmare to me, but I don't do that stuff. If. So that that I think is a practical reality, having a plan that doesn't rely. In in the near term, that doesn't rely on hoping. That there will not be another extension of the no more than ten person meeting rule. Is a good plan, at least for that purpose, because if we're going to do all this on the floor vote. When? Because there's no guarantee that July will work either. So it's, it's just a series of, you know, lemony snickety or snicket unfortunate choices here. That's why, at least on the secret ballot side of things, you've got a way to go forward. With a set, all your articles. Yes, it's only a yes or no on the budget, but at least you're done. And not, I think, as Mark was saying. Uncertainty is still a factor here of when you're going to actually be able to have a floor vote. And I don't know when that is.
I mean, but.
I guess what I was saying before.
Hold on, I, I've had my hand raised. I think we're going around and around and around at this point. I think we should take Taylor's idea. We should. Schedule the meetings. It's ten o'clock at night. I don't want to go around about this all over again. We should schedule it. And have a, we have a couple of days to think about it, work on it, and then we can, we can come back to it. We can, Allison, do some research, talk to the school people. What, you know, whatever needs to be done, let's, let's make our, just make a decision tonight. And not, and not keep discussing what the future is going to be because we don't know.
Proceed like you're going to proceed, and if you change course, you change course.
Right, let's, let's, like Bill said, let's, let's have a plan right now and move forward. Because just because other people aren't doing what we're doing doesn't mean that this is not a better idea. You know, it's because the the governor or those people, you know, she's got to work for the big situation. We have a solution. We have a plan. I think it's a pretty good one. I think it solves all our problems. It helps our small town staff to move forward. And it, there's nothing that we're doing that's, it gives people, more people a chance to vote on our budget than ever before. I think we've got some good points here. Let's schedule it. So what are we, are we looking for a motion? Are we looking for?
We just need to set, uh, set dates for a special select board meeting. If, you know, Allison's schedule is, needs to be verified, we can do that. We can talk about that, but it sounds like she has a problem on Friday. We can let them off to. And just take our chance there and just do it on Monday and get it all done. It gets it.
Bill, if if we get, if we get it on, or Audrey, if we get it done on Monday, can we still make, get the the ballot printed in time?
I can't. I'm not certain.
Well, tomorrow.
I'm, I'm not certain, but just because I'm not certain doesn't mean that I, I don't think that you should schedule it for Monday regardless.
We can do it over the weekend, right?
Good.
Could.
What are we saying? What was, what was the date that it has to be?
Well, it.
By, because it needs to be thirty days before June ninth, right?
Thirty days before June ninth.
Typically needs fifteen to ten days.
We have not the best printer. We have that, we can print things like.
No, 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 this is why we can't do that, and I did talk about that. We cannot possibly have a ballot that has. Like nineteen questions on it and count them all by hand. We really need it printed by like a. A proper ballot printer where it also gets programmed and it can read.
Yeah.
The scanner and tabulate the results.
Hold on, one of those machines can't read regular, what's the?
No, no, they need printed on a proper ballot, and it needs to also program the machine based on the questions.
Those are state machines.
Right, but what's different about the paper that if, where to?
Those machines are owned by the state and they're programmed by the state, so that's why the printers. Ballots have to go to them if you're going to use that machine. We can't just have them printed willy nilly anywhere.
The state prints them for us?
Yes, it's a private company. They program the machine to read the ballot. Otherwise, if you don't have them programmed, you have ballot can go through that.
I was, Katrina said there's a little chip or something she has.
There is a memory stick.
That's why the the last election, when they ran out of ballots and had to do, had to do Xerox ballots, they had to count all those by hand.
They had to get permission from the state.
Um, please, let's schedule the meeting. It's.
I'll research this on my own time, but, um.
Do we, um, do we, do we want to consider a weekend date?
I am fine with weekends.
Yeah, yeah, I can do any day but Thursday.
Oh. Mark?
Saturday, it's Sunday. Do you pick it? My wife will kill me, but let's get it.
Jenna?
I can do a week, I'd rat really.
I can do a week, I'd ra- really rather not, but I can do a weekend for if it's like a two hour meeting maximum.
Okay, um well, do do we generally feel? Saturday is better than Sunday. I'm, you know, I'm trying, really trying hard not to, we all are not. Saturday sounds like a better day than Sunday only because it's a Sabbath, but I would, I would do either one. I I don't care.
Evening.
Okay.
I will, I I won't do a Saturday. Um I I could, I can do, I'll do whatever on whatever, just not, please not Friday or Saturday night.
Where are you going?
Um nowhere.
I would prefer earlier on Saturday because it's it's family time later in the evening is is always family time for us.
Allison, Saturday afternoon.
Daytime is family time for me, but um but that's fine um. So I'll I'll accommodate others.
I will too. Taylor, you're open for any time?
Yep.
And it sounds like like uh we probably should run at least a few hours, um maybe Saturday at two.
This is another historical moment, guys. This is um.
I know, but.
Allison, I've never thought someone would be so excited about a Saturday.
And that's what they pay.
Stay positive about change.
As Allison told me that there's, that's what they pay us the big bucks for. But unfortunately, this would involve. I should have asked you, Audrey, you're involved here too.
Oh, I mean.
Audrey doesn't look thrilled, but she's gonna.
Whenever you need me, I'm around.
And Jody, Jody too, I I'm sorry, I should have uh asked, pulled you guys too. Will a weekend time work for you two?
Yep, I'll be there.
Saturday at two. Now, will we have all of the warrant language, town report and all of the recommended language for the ordinance ready for that?
Yes.
As well as, of course, the budget stuff, but. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the the um the sort of bulk of your work at this meeting will be approving your um recommendations. For the budget that'll go on the ballot.
Right.
Cause the rest of it is very much sort of the stock standard stuff that we do. You you know, you already did the work of the other. Land use ordinances and all that going on the secret ballot, so the bulk of your work is just going to be the budget stuff. And the rest of it is all sort of that procedural, um you know, annual. Um warrant articles that, you know, get approved at open floor town meeting every year.
We gotta get the budget nominating committee, though, is gonna have to really kick it in high gear.
Well, that's an interesting. Those are the two sacred things that must happen during open floor. Meeting, which is the budget nominating committee and the budget committee. So unfortunately. Budget committee and budget nominating committee, we can't put on the secret ballot.
You have one member on the budget nominee.
Would you say, Janice, would you say?
You have one member on the budget nominating committee.
Oh.
Does not appear, that phrase, open floor, hand vote, none of that stuff appears in our charter, so how?
I don't think this is something we need to discuss tonight.
Bill's saying, yes.
Is kind of an essential thing.
Yeah, I think it is true. Bill, you said, you said it is in the charter. Correct?
Yeah, it's uh, am I mute? No, I'm not. Uh right, so this this second. I'm not so sure that I think it would be very awkward to do the budget committee on the secret ballot. It probably is permissible, but the uh language about the nominating committee of all things is. Dot 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 dot, I shall choose by show of three two. Where'd it go? It's somewhere here that requires, yes, it does require a show of hands. I'm looking at Article one, section four. Yes, um voter shall choose by a show of hands, three members and two alternates to serve. As a budget committee nominating committee. Uh it's section four E of Article one. It's the only place it talks about a show of hands.
Be a show of hands on Zoom, right?
That's, we're right back to.
No, it's just, we'll, it could be done with a.
Come on, Bill, gray area.
No, no, this was.
This is very. This is the, this is what's gonna.
This is the spanner in the works right here.
Right.
You'd have a a floor vote um some seven days after your vote or it could be the next day. And it would just be for that sole purpose, so you're talking about a limited group of folks.
You can't restrict the number of people that are allowed to vote on the budget nominating, budget committee nominating committee.
According to Bob, it's okay.
I I think that, I think Zoom allows, what, fifty people to show up or forty nine people to show up? We can't, if if you can find forty nine more, more than ninety nine people that want to spend time nominating a budget committee, I'd be very impressed.
I'd also say like legal, what's the level of legal risk that somebody's gonna feel like we didn't?
Somebody gets moved into a town meeting, but you know, John, Sally, you're on the budget committee. I don't, I think I worry about that one right now. Tuesday, Saturday at two o'clock, um I guess, Janice uh or Audrey, you will set up the Zoom invite for that.
Did you have a question?
I was just gonna mention about the budget nominating that maybe that question is mute anyway, because technically, if we're going by the charter. The budget nominating is supposed to submit names by April first. To the select board for the ballot, and we only have one budget nominating member, so that process didn't happen.
That's a great point, Janice. Um is there, is there something in there about what happens if there's like a dereliction of duty and that? We don't, does, is it one of those things where the select board just gets to appoint them?
I, in the past, that's what we've done when we've had a vacancy that goes below nineteen members. Select board has the authority to appoint a budget member.
Our punishment for missing April first.
What about the budget nominating committee if all of them were to move out of town or something? Does our charter provide?
I mean, I would assume we could. We can, budget committee members, so I would assume we could budget nominating. We, last year, you only elected one person in June and. No one else ever came forward to. Fill the positions. It's a five.
Yeah. I make a motion.
Second.
Nobody has any energy to second it. All those in favor, I, Allison?
I'm gonna vote against it. I'm having too much fun.
Me too. Anybody wants to stay on, but it will be just. Everybody in favor of adjournment, Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Nay.
Bob, nay. Um. Taylor?
Hi.
Dana?
Aye.
Three to two vote. Thank you all so much. Anybody who wants to hang around, Chad, that's fine. Um just don't cut us off if you would, don't mind, because I think you have a controlling factor, Audrey.
No, we can't actually do that because of the public part.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
YouTube.
Yeah, we gotta.
Two of us can.
Yeah.
Hint, hint, but um.
Night, good night, everyone. Thank you. Sorry, I have a family. And I gotta go down and see him.
Everybody, this was a real barbed wire. Thank you so much for giving.
Have a good night.
Night.
Night.